Everyone. I hereby call the regular Palm Springs City Council meeting of June 29, 2023 to order. And at this time, I want to welcome Haley Ambrose up to the front. She's eight years old and she will be starting third grade at Quea Elementary School. Right down there, sweetie.
Red light.
There you go. There we go. She is going to start third grade at Quea Elementary this August. She loves to read, dance, play piano, and draw. And so Haley, now it's your turn. You get to lead us. Face this way. You want a little help?
Yeah.
So if we can all stand for Haley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Haley. Thank you. You know, I want to just acknowledge too that it takes a lot of courage for our kids to come up here, especially our little ones, and do this in front of all of you, especially when you have a packed house. So thank you so much to Haley and her family for being here and participating. All right, city clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember DeHart.
Here.
Councilmember Hostage.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Bernstein.
Here.
Mayor Gardner.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. So at this time, I want to invite Southern California Edison up to the front. Melissa Boyd is here to give us a little presentation about some of the power outages we've been experiencing. Melissa.
Good evening, mayor and councilmember. My name's Melissa Boyd again, and I am the Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. On behalf of Edison, I just want to thank you and for allowing us the time to present tonight Edison's work on our grid reliability in the region. Southern California, whoops, excuse me, I need to use my clicker here. Southern California Edison has a very expansive territory. We cover over 50,000 miles and have 5,900 circuits, 1.7 million poles, and 126,000 miles of transmission and distribution lines, as well as 753 transformers. So I know that's a lot of language that might be a little confusing, but essentially, we have a very large territory that we cover. We are spending about $5 billion each year to maintain and improve our infrastructure. And this includes 36 miles of underground cable that we are replacing, 119 miles of overhead conductor replaced for public safety, 24.5,000 distribution poles replaced, and 4.3,000 transmission poles, and 24 underground structure replacements. So we're very, very busy trying to make sure that we have a safe and reliable and affordable clean energy for our customers. Now, we'd like to give you a little bit of overview of our types of outages that our customers could have experienced in the past. First and foremost, the safety and well-being of our public, the workers, and our customers remains top priority. And we continue to take actions to maintain our operations and provide the safe, reliable service. In order for us to perform the work on our grid year-round, outages are a necessary part of the process. However, we don't make these decisions lightly. We want to make sure that it is as little as possible of a burden on our residents and the businesses, and we always aim to perform the work as quickly and safely as possible so the power is restored quickly. Outages can incur for several reasons. Some of them are scheduled, and others occur without warning, but they usually fall within the following categories. We have maintenance outages. These in general are service interruptions of this type are scheduled in advance, and we inform our customers of the outage details in at least three calendar days before the maintenance work begins. As an enhancement to the process, our communication team is now notifying customers approximately 10 days in advance of a maintenance outage, and we'll do this through email, phone call, or text messages. We also have repair and emergency outages. These are several categories that can occur without prior indication. Some of this will be something like an equipment failure, or cable faults, or damage by third parties. That could be a car hitting a pole, severe climate conditions such as wind and severe storms, and other significant demands on our electric system. In these situations, there is no possibility of giving customers advanced warning. We don't know these things are going to happen, so it's hard to give the notice that we would before on our scheduled outages. We have rotating outages. We want to make sure that no one neighborhood bears the entire burden of these energy shortages, so we rotate them throughout multiple areas of our service area. Those outages are defined as controlled temporary interruptions of electrical service and usually last between 10 and 45 minutes per neighborhood. But our critical care customers, those are the ones that, such as hospitals, nursing homes, those are generally excluded from those outages. To maintain 50,000 square miles of service territory, we require about 15,000 to 17,000 maintenance outages a year in our service territory. But we've been exceeding our maintenance goals and averaging well over 32,000 in the past few years as we're working to harden the grid and ensure that we're able to usher in modern technology for advancing of our grid. Now, it's not just enough that we designate our outage as critical and then move forward. The SCE is taking additional steps to identify whether the critical outage can be mitigated further. So this goes with our consideration that we take into every outage. Again, it's not lightly, but we make sure that if it's possible to reduce our outage footprint, we want to do that. We also are looking at critical care customers that might be affected. We are also conducting pre-work ahead of a power interruption to reduce the outage duration. And we also want to look at if it's possible to move forward with the project without it de-energizing customers. So we take all of that into consideration. One component of our outage process that has not changed is our notification process. Once an outage is entered into our system, customers will receive a letter via US Mail approximately three to eight days in advance of the outage. Digital notifications by phone, text, and email are typically sent out hours after the notification has been updated in our system. As such, we encourage our customers to keep their contact information updated. Many of the residents here in Palm Springs are already very familiar with that process, but please make sure that you have an updated phone number or email with us. It ensures that you receive not only the outage notifications, but also any updates on the outage. There are a couple reasons why our maintenance outages could be canceled. Some of it's due to weather. In Palm Springs, we have, you know, high heat and wind that can affect that sometimes. We also have maybe unsafe equipment is discovered at the last minute, permitting issues, maybe the job site isn't ready for us to conduct the work yet, or abnormal conditions. You know, circuit conditions sometimes change, and we want to make sure that we're able to do the work. And also, our resources might be pulled for emergency work. If there's a local outage emergency, we have to take care of that and take that into consideration. So preparedness is key for those that are affected by the outages. We know that an emergency can happen at any time. It's important for you to create a safety preparedness plan for family, including those with special needs and pets, so we encourage all of your residents to do that. We keep important, you want to make sure that you keep important phone numbers nearby in making that plan, like a hospital, your doctor, relatives. We want to make sure that you have learned how to manually open your garage doors or your gates, so familiarizing yourself with your utility boxes and how to turn those off. We also encourage installing surge protectors to help safeguard your equipment in the event of that happening. And if you're considering a generator, you'd want to consult with a licensed electrician to determine your proper power needs and for safe setup as well. We have during large-scale, long-duration PSPS emergency events, SCE will deploy what we call community crew vehicles and work with our local government agencies to develop community resource centers. These centers are typically where customers have access to restrooms and water, light snacks, electricity and such, and will work to ensure that these locations serve as a temporary safe haven for the residents in the event of that happening. We also have our community crew vehicles. These are mobile van units that are equipped with a generator to help residents charge their laptops and their phones, get water, light snacks, you know, current information of what's ongoing and what's impacting their neighborhood. And we also partner with 211. Many folks may be familiar with that program, but it provides up-to-date information on resources to the community. 211 is, if you aren't familiar with it, the number that you call from your phone to reach a service that's confidential, and it's available 24 hours a day for our residents to make sure that they have access for things like medical, food, shelter, and any additional assistance that might be needed during an emergency. So you can go to www.211.org, or you can just dial 211 from your cellphone. We have some customers that have a heightened need for medical power, so we have created our critical care backup battery program in the event, sorry, battery loan pilot program. So together, these are opportunities for our battery backup power during an outage event. These have a series of qualifications that you have to apply for, so we want to make sure if you do have a critical medical need that you apply for that with Edison, or if you live in a high fire area. We've also worked to create marketplace.se.com, which further enhances our resiliency plans by researching and purchasing portable batteries and/or generators of different size to match the residents' needs. We want to encourage all residents to sign up again for those notifications if you haven't already. You can sign up or set your account on sce.com. Once you are signed in, you can click on Settings. Clicking on the Settings button will open up your outage alert preferences. So finally, you input your contact information for either email, text, or phone. It's your preference, but make sure that that is up to date. Here is a snapshot of how our customer notifications work. This is the webpage here, so you're familiar with where you are going. And then this is a snapshot of what I previously mentioned of how our customer notifications work. So 10 to 11 days, you'll receive an automated message if you were enrolled in our outage alerts via text or phone. Eight to 10 days, our physical letters are printed, and they're mailed to residents as well. Outages that are scheduled less than 10 days before will still generate an automated outage alert and will still have the physical letters as well. If it is within eight days of an outage, we'll use door hangers. And three days out, our customer affairs is going to call all critical care customers to remind them of the upcoming outages so they can make the necessary preparations. One day before, automated reminders will be sent to customers enrolled in the outage alerts via their preferred communication channel. And on the day of the outage, automotive outage alerts are sent when the power is restored as well. So if changes occur, if it's canceled or changed, they'll be notified as well. There is a number of resources here on our outage center map. We encourage if you are experiencing an outage that is unplanned, it is not listed here on our website, we encourage you to report it and make that notification here on the website, or there's a phone number you can also call. I'll show in a moment. But on our website, you can find a map of the outage location where you can report a power outage, you can report a streetlight outage, outages by address, city, zip, how many people are affected. All of councilmembers and our city manager and everybody at the city can see how many of your customers are affected, and the start time of the outage, and when it's going to be restored, as well as the cause. We will put that in there as well. And the status of repairs and some contact numbers if need be. There are, like I mentioned, the two primary numbers to call here. The 800-655-4555 is our customer service number for all things Southern California Edison. So if a resident has any questions about their bill or concerns about their service, that is a great number for them to call. If it is concerning an outage, we encourage them to call 800-611-1911. That is the same. Folks that will be taking a look at any outages that are reported on our website as well. And with that, I'd just like to mention that we are making some additional efforts to work with the city and to keep its residents informed of any planned and unplanned work that we're doing in the area. I want to thank the mayor and city council for giving us the opportunity to present this evening. We do have some members of our team here for any questions you have. We have Louis Moreno from our outage communication team, Eileen Flores, one of our government relations managers, and Jeff Mumford from corporate communications here to assist with any additional questions or comments that the council or the mayor may have.
Thank you so much, Melissa. I really appreciate that. Council, do we have any questions? Councilmember DeHart.
Hey, Melissa. The question relating, relates to downtown in particular, and the age of the equipment that's downtown. What's being done? Is there a schedule on replacing that aged-out equipment for downtown businesses? In particular, we're getting to the point of, you know, the outages that the businesses are experiencing, in particular the restaurants, that they're experiencing, and the food cost that they're being impacted with. So we didn't talk about the age of the equipment and that replacement program. Can you share a little bit about that?
We, I don't have the specific circuit. We'd have to take a look at where those restaurants, what circuit they're connected to, so that we could see how old it is and when it's being replaced. But we do take a look and do reports. Every single year, we're taking a look at what is aging out and what needs to be repaired. Sometimes, it's again, things that are unplanned, that we weren't expecting equipment failure, and if there was something that has experienced an outage that needs to be restored, we do try to move to repair that quickly. I don't believe I know of any specifically that are assigned to downtown right now, but I would need to get that information that I could get for you later.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. I think all of us.
Oh. Sorry, Louis is a member of our outage team, so councilmember DeHart, he might have better information for you.
Good afternoon. I just want to add some more context. Okay, I'm Louis Slada. I'm here with the team. As you can tell, I'm the only one that likes bread on our team. So, but anyway, yes, we have a very robust maintenance program throughout our service territory, all 50,000 square miles. So everything that's overhead gets inspected every three years. Everything that's underground is inspected every five years. So with respect to aging, we're always keeping a close tap on what's happened, where the conditions in the field. If something is maybe approaching maybe its lifetime or well ahead of its lifetime, we work to jump ahead and get ahead of it and replace it as quickly as possible. So sometimes the equipment may be a little bit older, but it's still in optimal operating conditions. So again, our maintenance program helps us stay on top of what's happening, where and when, and if we need to replace it relatively quickly. But with respect to specifically downtown, I can go ahead and take that action item to find out what our circuitry is looking like, maintenance programs, things like that, and then we can report back to you. Not a problem.
I concur and thank councilmember DeHart for his question. I think we all would like to have a sense of what is the age of the equipment across our city so that we can have some expectation as to what to expect. You make very valid points about the importance of maintenance. I don't think you have any customers who would argue that that is absolutely critical because it goes to avoiding unnecessary outages. But I have to tell you that while we know you need to work year-round, any outage during the summer months in Palm Springs is going to create serious issues for any number of individuals. And my own personal experience with receiving outage notices is you're very good about notifying us over and over and over again. Unfortunately, usually an hour or two after the action has taken place. So I appreciate the enthusiasm around getting notices out, but it's that timely notice, and every effort needs to be made to do as much maintenance in the winter months as you can possibly do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Melissa, for that. And I do understand that you're trying your best, but I will tell you, the number of complaints we're hearing from residents and businesses on the outages, both planned and unplanned, has risen significantly recently. And when you're starting to do this to a business, it affects, you know, their employees, it affects, as councilmember DeHart said, their goods. I can also tell you, I have four locations. The timing of the outages is probably 25% is wrong. It either starts earlier or ends later, or changes the last minute. And so I think that's something that's very difficult, especially for, you know, in the summer, but for businesses, for people who don't have places to go. I think we need to do better on that in terms of making sure that we stick to, if we say it's going to be from nine to five, that it is only nine to five. I know people have gone to hotels or other places to avoid being without power. We have people who work from home who need power. And again, in downtown, we're hearing it, I know both councilmember DeHart and I are hearing it a lot from businesses who are experiencing outages, both planned and unplanned, that are creating significant problems for their businesses. And if the equipment is old, then something needs to be done. So I appreciate you coming here and listening to us, and obviously, you're hearing these complaints, but we're hearing a lot of complaints from the residents and businesses about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. I really appreciate that the entire team is here to answer questions. I share the concern of the other councilmembers. The other question I have is, it seems that we're hearing from certain areas of town that are getting hit with notifications for outages just over and over again. I believe it was six times in one particular neighborhood. Can you address this issue? Why is it, is there work being done in this specific neighborhood? How do we kind of, I know no one wants this, but how do we spread it out so that if we do have to have an outage, that it's not impacting the same people over and over again?
I know the community that you're speaking of, Louis. That's better.
So just add a little more additional context on that. So currently, Edison is undergoing what's called a cutover project out of one of our subs, the building sub. This project is impacting three circuits coming out of that sub. We're talking roughly about, oh gosh, I don't remember the exact customer count, but these three circuits are impacting these customers. Now, this work started probably in the beginning of, part of the year, about Q1, give or take, and it will continue through Q4 approximately. So there will be continuous work. We understand that it's impacting our customers negatively. We completely understand that. But what is the cutover project? So we have a lot of circuits that are still 4KV circuits. So years, years ago, many of customers, we didn't have that high demand for energy, for power. Today, we have a lot more businesses, a lot more homes. Sometimes, some of our homes, we have multiple TVs, multiple refrigerators, et cetera. There's more demand. There's more demand on the grid. So in order for us to continue moving forward and supplying power to that demand, we need to ensure that the grid is robust enough to ensure that that community continues to grow, there's still power enough there. So we're aging out all of the 4KV systems and replacing them with 16KV systems. This will ensure long-term reliability and that we're able to provide and deliver power to our customers. So that's what this project is intended to do, is cut over the 4KV to 16KV circuits, and while we're doing that, upgrade the substation so there's enough power, enough juice there to supply the need for our constituents. So this project will continue. We have discussed it on our end, and we still want to stay in close communication with you guys so you guys know what's happening, what's going on. And also, we were talking about on the communication front where maybe we have fallen short. So just from the get-go, I apologize for that. Okay? Just from the get-go. We do our best and we strive to, you know, to deliver perfection as best as we can or as close as we possibly can, and we want to deliver information as often, as quickly as we possibly can. So if you do happen to receive any complaints from your constituents, say, hey, you know what? They didn't send me a communication in time, or they didn't email me something in time, please let me know. What we'll do on our end is our team will start researching it, you know, conduct a deep dive on it, find out what happened. Was there a glitch in the system? Maybe the customer did something on their, on their end which has happened, where they tried to update their outage communication contact and something gets deleted or something gets shifted. So that'll help us kind of ensure that we're all on the same, you know, playing field, we're all talking the same things, and we're able to deliver an improved customer experience, which is the ultimate goal.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate you answering those questions. Councilmember Holstage.
Thank you. I so appreciate that and appreciate your answers and you being here and having the whole team. I think that says a lot to our community. I just wanted to echo the comments made by my colleagues. You know, you're our partner in this, and so the city does a lot of work to provide cooling shelters for folks if they do need to cool down. To councilmember Middleton's point, these are life safety issues for our residents. Many are older, some are homebound. We're seeing more and more days over 120, and so if you're homebound and it is 100 or 110 in your house, that is a significant life safety issue with medication and keeping everything we need cool. But we're your partner in this. So please, we want to work with you in partnership if there are ways that we, you know, are very interested in our infrastructure and ways that we can invest in it or seek grant funding to invest in that so that we can have more up-to-date, you know, power service through your, all the science things that I don't understand as a lawyer of how to provide power. We want to work with you in that, and then we're partners to our residents as well because we're providing cooling, we're communicating with our residents, we do that when they're hearing from us. So appreciate your showing good faith as a partner and showing up here, and thank you to offering to work with our community because that's incredibly important as we work together. We know this issue, I mean, hopefully it's going away, but I expect it'll get worse and worse as we're on the front lines of the climate crisis, and it's getting hotter and hotter here, and we need to really protect the health and safety of our residents in extreme heat.
Of course. Thank you for that. And on that note, one other you mentioned, growing our partnership. I do have something to offer for your constituents. Our team has developed a, we call it a power talk. Essentially what it is, it's an educational forum where we can engage constituents one-on-one, kind of pull back the veil of what happens behind the scenes when we experience an unplanned or what we call a repair outage. What happens in advance when we're planning a maintenance project? How do we communicate? How do we engage? And more importantly, where do customers go for more information, for more details? How can they prepare in advance for these types of events? So I want to offer that to the city council, I want to offer that to your constituents. If this is something that's of interest to you, and that may garner more interest from your community, let us know. We can come out here, put on, you know, a presentation for them, answer questions for them, provide updates perhaps on the building sub is coming along. And again, not just engage with our city council members, but also with your constituents directly. That may prove very beneficial for us in the long run.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that and love to receive more information about that program. Thank you all, and we're going to move on now. So thank you for being here. All right. And I just want to let council know that we are going to be able to use our screens to do motions and vote, so just as a reminder. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order at urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I'd like us to move all of the business items, 3A, 3B, and 3C, to the top of the agenda after we do consent because those items relate to the budget which we will be passing at the end of the meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or a council member would like removed from consent for separate discussion and/or vote? Councilmember DeHart. Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Yeah, 1M, as in Mike. And I'm going to recuse myself from item 1DD on the film festivals since, in abundance of caution, since my business does my merchandise for them. And I have some comments and a couple others that I don't need to pull.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Holstage.
Thank you. I also had 1EE and 1M, so thank you to my colleagues. I felt like I was pulling too much. I also have 1G and, let me double check.
S as in Sam?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to accept the agenda by me. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second so we can vote. The agenda is accepted. At this time, I invite city attorney Ballinger to provide a report on the closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. The city council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you're speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment will be taken at the end of the meeting. If there's any written comment that you wish to distribute to the city council members, please hand that over to the city clerk. And before we turn to our first speaker, I do want to just say that even though Palm Springs celebrates Pride in November, we do recognize that June is Pride Month, and we were very excited to be able to present a proclamation for Pride Month. I know that our first two speakers are going to speak a little bit about that. So Bill Mitchell, followed by David Vignolo.
Good evening. My name is Bill Mitchell, and with me is my husband, David Vignolo, and we are here tonight to thank the Palm Springs City Council for issuing a proclamation recognizing June 2023 as World Pride Month. Despite the many gains that the LGBTQ+ community has made since that first Pride March 53 years ago, the recent wave of anti-LGBTQ+ legislation and the increase in violence against members of the community, particularly against trans individuals, shows that the struggle continues to achieve a safe, inclusive, and nurturing environment for all citizens. We're grateful to the council for its work to actively promote the principles of equality, human rights, liberty, and justice for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David, did you want to add anything?
I did it all.
Okay. Thank you both. We really appreciate it, and happy Pride, everyone. And I know we've already had some Pride events this month, even though we don't usually, so I'm very excited about that. Maybe, we do already celebrate Pride all year round, right? So what's another event? Just more fun? All right, we will begin. We have Brad Anderson, followed by Nona Watson and Kevin Blessing.
Good evening. Good evening. I don't know if this is on. Yes, I'm sorry. My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Ranse Maras. I'm going to speak on item 1A today. This is concerning the remote access that you have, or you're using AB 361, I believe, illegally, and this is more or less a cease and desist letter to stop that action. I understand, I think for the general public, the AB 361, I understand, I think I understand why you think you can use that, but it expired with the state of emergency with the California. I think you're the only city using that. Well, I can't really explain why you're using it, but I have a premise of why, but most people, it's mainly, you're using mainly for the city council members or any appointed members to, I consider hiding from the public in their home or some other type of, some other area, and they should be accessible to the public. And this is really important. This is the fundamental principle of free speech in our country. And all this stuff has been taken away, the safeguards of the Brown Act, which is for everybody that speaks or anybody that has an opinion about anything in California at a public meeting, it's getting eroded, and this is one aspect of it. And AB 361, you don't have to have that in place to have remote meetings for the public. It's only for the city council members or the appointed members not to be accessible to the public. So I urge you to stop doing that immediately because I believe it's an illegal act. So I've spoke about that before, and I'm going to go ahead and leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Nona Watson, followed by Kevin Blessing.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm Nona Watson. I'm the CEO of the Palm Springs Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here because I know you're renewing our contract or looking at our contract for the Walk of Stars. But I wanted to take a minute to let you know how honored and how excited we are to be able to manage that program for the city. It is a very special program, and it's one that we don't take lightly. We know that our city has a lot of moving parts that make it really special, and the Walk of Stars is one of those parts, and it really helps market our city. It is unique in that it's a program that not only honors actual movie stars, people that have called Palm Springs their playground for years, but we also honor local stars, and these are the people that really make us special. They give us their time, their talents, their treasures, and they set us apart from any other city, and we understand how special that is. I'm here with Evan Gray. Evan manages the program with me for the chamber. We're here to answer any questions, but honestly, just wanted you to know that we're looking forward to another five years. I can't believe five years has already gone by, and we're very proud of what we've done with this program and how far we've taken it, but we've got some great stars ahead, and we're here to answer any questions or concerns that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Blessing, followed by Bruce Younger.
Hello, Mayor Gardner, city council, staff. My name is Kevin Blessing. I'm here on what I believe is a homeless urgent matter, and that is, I unfortunately have been homeless now for two and a half years. I've been a member of this Coachella Valley for over 30 years now, and I was unfortunately hit by a bad actor, which was my accountant, and who was hired by me and my partner, former Ranse Maras Mayor, city councilman Scott Hines, to manage our business affairs, and he ended up taking everything that we had. So unfortunately, I have been now one of the many homeless that are out there in our community for just over two and a half years now. Some of the issues, I'll keep this brief because I have more, I'll probably come back in two weeks, is the urgent need is that we need restroom facilities 24/7. We can't wait until the sun comes back up for the doors to unlock for us to go use the laboratory. When we wake up, when we all wake up, we have to relieve ourselves, and what we have to put ourselves up against is we have to go find a place that's private enough, we have to make sure that our belongings are secure, we have to make sure that the police are not there to give us a ticket for doing something that we shouldn't be doing, and that's a lot to put on our minds and then try to relieve ourselves in general. So I'm asking you to please consider that we have porta potties placed throughout the city, and in addition to porta potties, we need some sort of lockers. Everyone is complaining about all the trash that we leave. If we had some sort of lockers in designated locations, I'm not sure if they should be locked up or comboed, I don't know, but we need something where the homeless can store some items, some mementos. They don't always have to be fretting about, is this going to be stolen? Or where do we hide this bag so it's going to be safe till the next time we find it? And that's not a life to have for any of us. It's too stressful to be homeless as it is now, but to have to worry about that as well is just compounding the issue. I consider homeless being a full-time job. I've done a lot of things. I've been a regional with Macy's Department Stores. I owned two businesses here in the Coachella Valley over the past 30 years. This homeless business is a lot of work, I tell you that. So I suggest you may want to get out there on the streets and see how difficult it really is. Yes, some of us are drug addicted, some of us have mental issues, but the biggest thing is we're part of this community, and we deserve to have basic services like everybody else.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Bruce Younger, followed by Michael Hothorn.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Bruce Younger, and I wish to address item 3A on the agenda. At your last meeting, I expressed my concern about how the navigation center has apparently been growing in scope and my fear that this is being turned into a regional homeless facility. I also noted my objection on how the astronomical cost of this yet-to-be-open center has ballooned. After I spoke, I heard from several residents across Palm Springs thanking me for speaking up on this issue. So I would like you to understand that there is widespread concern throughout the community on the direction that the center is heading. There is also several of my neighbors here this evening that wish to help communicate in detail their objections on how this facility is being expanded, and I believe several have also submitted written comments who are unable to be with us tonight. Of most concern to us is the proposed addition of 50 overnight beds to the center. We were promised by the city in your local outreach meetings that it would not be a drop-in facility. Were we misled, or are you just using semantics to say it's not the same thing? What is really alarming about this is that because of this new plan, Martha's Kitchen has now abandoned its plans for a 95-shelter bed facility at another location, one that would in all likelihood be closer to where the homeless are actually concentrated. This proves how the navigation center is being expanded way beyond what the city had promised to its neighbors, and I urge you to vote no on the additional $5 million funding. Have this plan sent back and revised to what the city originally presented to its citizens. Thank you, and I think some of my neighbors are going to follow up with the same line of comments. Appreciate your concern.
Thank you. Michael Hothorn, followed by William Marta.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Michael Hothorn. I'm a resident of Mirland in District 1. I wish to address item 3A. I want to begin by commending the city council for striving to address the unhoused with the expansion of the relationship with Martha's Village in Palm Springs, a trusted resource in the valley. That said, I am not alone in strongly opposing the proposal to expand the scope of the navigation center to include an early-entry facility with approximately 50 overnight shelter beds. I also oppose the additional funding for reasons my fellow residents are outlining tonight. I believe the navigation center is being expanded beyond what the city had promised its neighbors during outreach discussions, and I urge you to vote no on the additional $5 million funding and have this plan revised back to what the city originally presented to its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. William Marta, followed by Patrick Gunn.
My name's William Marta. I'm a resident of Mirland, District 1, and I wish to address item 3A. The navigation center was designed to, designed and conveyed as a transitional housing initiative, aiming to offer individuals experiencing homelessness with a desire to transition the necessary and specific types of support required to progress towards self-sufficiency. Introducing an early-entry facility that focuses on overnight shelter accommodations undermines the core objectives of the navigation center. It distracts from the effective delivery of comprehensive transitional services such as counseling, job training, job interview preparation, and access to unique types of social and mental health services, which are crucial for individuals to successfully transition out of homelessness through transitional living. This location faced considerable criticism back then, which is now further bolstered by the proposition and transporting individuals with more severe reluctance toward transitional housing. In favor of providing temporary overnight accommodations, an early-entry facility should be located close to where the homeless are concentrated, primarily downtown, along parts of Ramon Road and in the washes. I believe early-entry facilities should be left in the hands of the extremely capable organizations like Martha's Village. I believe the navigation center is being expanded beyond I believe the Navigation Center is being expanded beyond what the city has promised its neighbors during outreach discussions, and I urge you to vote no on the additional $5 million funding and have this plan revised back to what the city originally presented to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Patrick Gunn, followed by Lars Holm.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I am also a resident of Miralong. My name is Patrick Gunn, and I'll be speaking on item 3A, the Navigation Center. Before dismissing my fellow residents' predictions as alarmist, the council must consider a significant incident that occurred recently within the gated community of Miralong, located across Indian Canyon from the proposed Navigation Center. An individual who remains unidentified by law enforcement entered a construction site and caused a fire that destroyed two homes. If it had been a windier night, the damage and potential harm to human life could have been much worse. This incident, while the most severe, is not isolated, and locating an early-entry facility at the Navigation Center will only increase disturbances. Developing an early-entry facility at this location will unquestionably lead to increased loitering, disturbances, and even more crime in the area, mainly not by shelter visitors, but by anyone who might prey on them or attempt to exploit them. While there are discussions about the Navigation Center's construction, not a single sentence that we've seen addresses the city and county's plan to maintain order in the neighborhood. If such a plan exists, residents should be informed for their input. If not, some, if not all, of the additional $5 million should be redirected to address these District 1 issues that have been longstanding and may become worse. The City Council assured District 1 residents that the Navigation Center would only serve as transitional housing. Residents are willing to participate in this process to ensure the best outcome possible for all involved. While there may only be around 200 homes at Miralong now, current residents feel a responsibility to the future residents of the 1,100-home build-out to ensure the Navigation Center is properly and safely integrated into the neighborhood. I urge you to vote against the additional $5 million funding and revise the plan to align with the city's original presentation, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lars Holm, followed by Jenny Fote, who's on the phone.
Yes, my name is Lars Holm. I was born and raised in Palm Springs. My family has had the same home since 1954 in the Sunrise Park area, and I've seen a lot of changes, but the overspending on this homeless shelter has gotten way out of hand, and I would like you to not support another $5 million to be invested in it. I did see a program when I was in Albuquerque, New Mexico, where they gave vouchers to the homeless to stay at the Motel 6, which I stayed at, and it was filled. And the guy said he's doing great because he's making money and fixing up the Motel 6, and the homeless people were filled. Plenty of cops in the parking lot arresting people all the time, so I felt safe. But $5 million for a project that's already out of hand is way too much. The spending has gotten out of hand, and not only that, I would like to know, once it is open, what is going to be the monthly expenses? Because we plan on having medical, mental, air conditioning. There's a lot in keeping this place open from month to month. Will Palm Springs be responsible for that expense? Are we going to have to pay another 3%, 2%, 4% in taxes to cover that? I am turning 65 and collecting Social Security the end of this year, so I'm on a budget, and I don't want to spend, I mean, I'm pro-helping the homeless, but I also want to survive myself and not become homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Then our final public comment is Jenny Fote, and she's on the phone.
Hi, Mayor. I actually am not on the phone. I'm on the Zoom. So I'm speaking on 3A also. I began working on this project in August of 2021, and here it is almost August of 2024, and not one shovel is in the ground, so to speak. We built the downtown faster than we're building this, but I'm beginning to feel the failure of Roy's Resource Center in this project. Roy's was going to offer so many projects and programs that are needed for the homeless to transition into successful lives, and all we are doing is value engineering out all that was supposed to be in this program, and we're adding a program that wasn't supposed to be and wasn't presented to the citizens. So now we have a project that's had so many consultants that it feels like there are consultants to the consultants, and what we've ended up with was a building, Building 8, that had none of the services that were promised. There was no services for the pets of the homeless. Homeless pets are not phyto, are not your little fluffy pets. They have mange, they're not spayed, they maybe have parvo and not vaccinated, which would not have been safe for the residents that we were putting in, but we had no service area plan to take care of that. We had a group of beauticians that were offering to come in free and volunteering once a week to do hair so that people going out for jobs or people looking for jobs could be presentable. We designed something in Building 8 that had a one-stall bathroom and conference rooms for up to 20 people. There was a large kitchen planned for future use, which was to be a teaching kitchen where people could train in cooking, and maybe we could have started a business that would help.
Okay, thank you very much. That was time. All right, the next item is the Consent Calendar. It will entertain a motion to accept the Consent Calendar without items 1G, 1M as in Mesquite, 1S as in Smoke Tree, and 1EE. I'd also like to note the recusal of Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein on item 1DD.
Honorable Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just also a correction, a brief correction to the consent agenda. Item 1J is the Fire Compliance with State Mandate Inspection Reports. And just a very brief change on that for the record, of course, we have the California State Fire Marshal mandated annual inspection program. In the chart on page 2, it indicates under R2 occupancy, the number should be total buildings to be inspected is 569, and the total properties that were inspected is 569. So all of those were completed for the year. And also in the occupancy E category, the total number of buildings to be inspected is 18. All of those properties were inspected as well for a 100% success rate, so I just wanted to make those two minor changes for the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, do we have a motion and a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Great, so Consent Calendar passes. So at this time, we'll move on to comments, Mayor Pro Tem, and then we'll move on to the other items.
I just have comments on, thank you, Madam Mayor, on 1V as in Victor and 1W as in Whiskey, the road pavement. I want to make sure we always highlight that these are from Measure J dollars, particularly the completed ones. I don't think we mentioned it in the staff report. That was about $7 million last year. I also see there's a potential request to go up to $12 million. I want to make sure that when that happens, we have a full report on how we've done, and also that all of the information in 1V and W is put online. I think the last street paving that we see online is from 2019. So that was just my comments. And my other comment is that we still have contracts that are going to people outside the city and the valley, and we should keep having local preference and increase it and work with procurement to do whatever we can to encourage local bidders for our projects. That was my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Holstidge, go ahead.
Thank you. I agree with you, really appreciate that, and also I had flagged that, so thank you to Mayor Pro Tem. Agree, you know, $7 million for a road paving is an incredible success story for our community, so I'd love to see Measure J referenced, it's really important, and then also, you know, press coverage and the work that we do to share that with our community because that's an incredible win. I do think we should do more work as well, just with the new scores of the roads. We always get questions about why that was happened, why that was rated the way it was, and how that system works, and we always get in on the back end instead of the front end of explaining we've done a review of the streets. One thing I also want to raise is I'd love to just see if we're analyzing the work that came before and the quality of the work. I know a lot of residents had complained that some of the newly paved streets had had some issues, like we're already cracking and things like that, so I just want to make sure, especially if we're using the same companies doing this work, to just ensure that there's some metrics of, you know, oversight of that work, which I'm sure is happening on the staff level, but it would be great for us to know that about as we communicate our wins to the community. And then I just wanted to lift up item 1Q as well and thank our firefighters and our fire managers and our whole team. We're going through a bargaining with many of our city staff unions, and we're giving good wage raises to our team and really taking care of our team, and so I just wanted to thank, I see our fire chief is here, and other staff members. Thank everyone for the work and thanks for working with us. It's great to be able to invest in our team and in our staff who does the hard work every single day.
Thank you. And before we move on to the pulled Consent Calendar items, I just want to turn it over to Councilmember DeHart for a request.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm asking today that we adjourn our meeting in the memory of business leader and entrepreneur and patriarch of the Marcus family, Kaiser Marcus, who passed away last night.
Thank you, and we will do that. Next, we will move to item 1G, approve amendment number 2 to agreement with JNS Media Specialists. I believe Councilmember Holstidge pulled this item. Did you want a staff report or to comment?
I would like to comment, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is a request to approve an amendment to an agreement with a media specialist company for creative and media support. I think this is incredibly important for the city. I also noted that it's a company in La Quinta, which is great. We love to support the Coachella Valley, but it's not, there's a lot of people who do this work in Palm Springs itself. I just wanted to ask, for the RFP process, we're not getting lists of who all bid. All we're getting in the staff report is the final company that was selected, and so I'm having a really hard time analyzing any of the procurement process, and so I just wanted to ask, is that typical, that you're just presenting to us the one company that was recommended versus, you know, if it's an open bid process, if there were other bids?
I think that's because this one is an amendment to the original, so I think when we brought this back to you as the original agreement, we probably did have any other bidders in that.
I've noticed in multiple Consent Calendar items tonight, for example, it's just not listed who all the bids were because I'm interested in where they're coming from, and I'm not able to see that. So if it's something I'm missing, then, but I'd love to see those in the future just so we can assess, because I am thinking through if we need to redo our local preference ordinance so we can do some of that work from a policy level. And then I just wanted to lift up, you're spending a lot of money on communication support and contracting. You know, I've always advocated for more in-house communication support, more in-house media and social media. We're spending an amount of money that would pay for a person in the city, so I just wanted to lift up to my council as we think about the budget, you know, what we want to contract out and what we want to have in-house as expertise, but I'm happy to support this as presented today. So I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and another comment by Mayor Pro Tem.
As long as you brought it up. So I know Kim Baker, our procurement specialist, is here, and you mentioned to me a while ago you were looking at a procurement fair, as you've done elsewhere, and I really hope that we proceed with that to let our local businesses and individuals know how to bid. I know typically we also do Planet Bids and Desert Sun, but for things that we may want to do other types of communications that for people who may not always look at Planet Bids or Desert Sun, thinking that they could apply, especially with things like creative, and we have another one in here for advertising, and there's probably a lot of businesses out here that would apply if they actually knew about it, but they're not always on the radar. So I appreciate that you brought that to my attention before, and I hope that, I really want to encourage and make sure you have the resources to do that, and I know at least council would support that.
Yes, absolutely. We are planning the vendor fair in September, and the reason why we chose September is to let the businesses come back, you know, in the summertime, it gets a little quiet, so we thought, well, we didn't want anybody to miss an opportunity, so we thought we would do it in September. Then we're going to meet with the city of La Quinta in September also, and we're looking in the future doing a Coachella Valley-wide fair as well because we think vendors that may want to work for us may want to work for other cities as well, and if they could have a one-stop and learn about all the different cities and how they do business, that that might be attractive to them as well. So we're going to expand it even beyond that. And then to Councilmember Holstidge's comment about listing the firms, we do that on bids. We've not done it on proposals as a practice, but there's no reason why we can't. On bids, you know, you always get the bidder and the bid amount, but on proposals, you know, there's a lot of different factors that go into grading those. So you would have a list, you just wouldn't have, you know, they don't go off low bids, so you don't typically do the list with cost, because then that causes confusion, like, why didn't you pick the low bidder? Well, it's not a bid, and you end up explaining that over and over again. So that's why we typically don't do that, but providing a list of who proposed, that's not a problem.
Thank you. I'd love a list just so we can analyze who's interested in this work, who's doing it in our community, if there are policy considerations for who's being selected over whom, that would be great.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that to me.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Holstidge. Do we have a second? A second by Mayor Pro Tem, if we can get votes. Thank you. Item 1G passes 5-0. The next item on our agenda is item 1M, accept grant award from California Public Utilities Commission in an amount of $233,500. Mayor Pro Tem, did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, could I get a staff report?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. What questions did you have on the staff report?
If you can just do a quick overview for the public on what the item is, that would be great, and then just introduce yourself as well for the public.
Of course. My name is Larry Klingeman. I'm the IT Director for the City of Palm Springs, and fiber optics, I don't know if some of you remember me from last year, my first meeting, is one of my passions. So there's a lot of grant money out there to try and build the city out, so we started down a process last year of applying for a LADA grant, and we were awarded up to $233,000 to provide a fiber optic or broadband master plan. What that will do is we will look to the constituents, we'll talk to the business owners, other government agencies, nonprofits, residents, carriers, what have you, try and gain the interest of what needs to happen in the city and what we should plan to do going forward. And then the constituent, through multiple stakeholder meetings, engagement can draw out some business plans of what options we have, and then the city can look to implement those plans going forward. Hopefully, if the bid money that passes, which is what Mr. Biden or President Biden announced last week or this week, California was awarded almost $2 billion for fiber optic funding, so the plan is to, through this master plan, generate shovel-ready projects to then hopefully go for next year.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. A couple of questions. On the grant, it says it's to benefit unserved or underserved Californians. Is that limited to households or businesses as well?
I don't know the actual definition of that. The target of this is what we do is we look to include those communities that have or those sections of communities that are underserved. It's a fairly complex definition of what they consider underserved. They're talking about broadband needs. They're talking about broadband needs. So anything over, then you start getting into megabits and all that, and everybody starts stopping, listening to me at that point. But people with the lower-speed internet connections, it's targeted to serve those communities, so whether it's a business or residential. But if other communities or government institutions are along the path to serve those, they can also get served at the same time. One other piece that I forgot to mention is we're also looking to coordinate, or we are coordinating with C-VAG. The City of India is doing the same thing, and many other cities are doing the same process. So we're working with C-VAG to try and coordinate to create pathways around the entire valley to create some extra connectivity.
Okay. Great, thank you. And it also says the contractor, I guess who's going to do the master plan, is going to conduct the six group meetings. And how are they, how are we picking the representatives and are they conducting? Are we going to be involved in the, in those meetings?
So, so we will be very, very involved in this. And like I said, the, the key aspect of it is to get as many stakeholders as possible that could potentially benefit from broadband being in the city. One of the key drivers in the RFP was business attraction, retention, and growth. That's one of the pieces that we're looking for, in addition to helping the residents have better service. We're also, like I said earlier, looking to partner with the school district, the tribes, and even the carriers, just to try and find the best way to build out this infrastructure. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with this funding coming up. So the plan is to try and figure out what the community really wants and could use going forward, and have a plan to go forward.
I, I agree with you. It's a once-in-a-lifetime. And, and the reason I brought this up is because, you know, as a city and in our economic development, as we're so reliant on, on tourism right now, you know, one of the abilities that we have to grow is, is as a, as a tech center here. And whether that is, you know, companies or people working from home or, or office hubs. And I would suggest that we have, either in conjunction or ongoing on ourselves, a Palm Springs Tech Task Force to sort of deal with how of our economic growth, because it's not just, as you said, the stakeholders are current businesses and residents and our schools, but, you know, if we're looking at how do we create a whole new industry here, which might be tech, you know, we could be Silicon Desert. But we also looking, we're going to have a College of the Desert here that's going to raise it. We have, our airport is going up significantly, that it's really going to be sort of a, an economic development, and I think we should have a very broad and expansive view of what we can do. That's not just that we don't limit ourselves, since this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I know there's a lot of individuals in, in, who have vast tech experience in our community who may not necessarily have a business here, but would understand what the needs of the tech industry are. So that's something that I would like to be involved with and make sure that our city staff and council is closely involved with the development of.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. I was going to pull this item also to say thank you for bringing this forward. Broadband infrastructure really has been a priority of the council and the community, and we get asked about it a lot. So really appreciate your foresight in applying for this and securing these funds. I just wanted to ask about other funding opportunities. So, you know, I always say, which I know this plan isn't going to be, but we don't want plans that sit on a shelf. We really want to implement them, and so, you know, we want, we need to plan, and that will support our ability to get grant funding in the future, I'm sure. Is there other funding from the CPUC that we could apply for now, or do we really need to wait until the plan is completed? How does that additional grant funding work?
Well, I, I found something else today that was brought to my attention from the library director of some additional funding, and it's identified to connect libraries with other community centers. So I've started to look into that. And we've already worked a couple times, we just applied right now for another grant through the CPUC to update the public internet terminals at Demuth. And if you recollect, we just accepted a grant recently for the library. So that's a rolling grant, so expect to see multiples coming of that. We'll be applying again on January 1st, and then more than likely July 1st.
Great, that's great. And the city has really tried to expand our grant capacity, and so please do let us know. We've gone the six, nearly six years I've been on city council. We had an in-house grant person. We tried to contract it out and use consultants. Really, I think the success we're seeing is individual staff members who are finding them and bringing it. But for the city manager, you know, we want to support that effort. It's obviously worth the investment. So I know we've hired, we've hired consultants to help in Sacramento, looking for funding opportunities and in federal budget as well. So please do rely on that and let us know if you need more resources or support to do that grant-finding opportunity, because we are so far behind in internet infrastructure in the city, and it is really scary as, like, the number, one of the main issues we need to do to compete in the future economy is to have access. So really appreciate you doing that work. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last thing to add, if I could. We actually utilize Townsend as our grant advisor, and they worked with me on this, on both of these grants to, and they were very helpful during the process.
That's great. That's why we hired them, so I'm good to, I'm glad to hear that's working. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
For doing that.
Thank you very much. At this time, do we have a motion and a second on this item? Okay, thank you. If we can all vote. Great. Item 1M passes 5-0. This time, we move on to Item 1S, Approve Agreement with West Coast Arboris for Citywide Tree Trimming Services. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. I had this question just for staff. So this is 4.2 million for a three-year term, and then with extensions. I just couldn't tell from the staff report, is this new activity that the city is engaging with? Is just this existing, and the term has expired? I couldn't quite find that information in this staff report, and so I couldn't quite tell what was going on here. I'm still not used to seeing $4 million things come to, to come to consent, which I'm getting used to, and I appreciate this is just regular business for the city. But I just had some of those questions. And then also the vendors, it didn't include where they're from, and I very much like to see that information. I see this vendor's from India, which is great, they're in the Coachella Valley. So I would just ask in the future if we continue to put the location of the business so we can, again, analyze where we're investing $4 million of city funds into. So this is just business as usual and not changing our policy with tree trimming? I know we discussed that a little bit at city council.
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember Holstich. This is a renewal of a contract. We went out to bid, the previous contract for tree trimming services is expiring. So we just went out and renewed this process, and we will continue to use the same process that West Coast Arboris has as far as making sure that we are following protocols for environmental sustainability as well.
And this, is this the same price or comparable to what we were paying before? None of that information's in the staff report, that I can tell.
Do we have any additional information that we might be able to provide from here?
While we're coming up, Councilmember, I just, for the public's benefit, this is a three-year, a three-year contract renewal with two one-year options to renew.
Thank you. About $1 million in sum per year, which is high.
Hi, Tabitha Richards. I'm the Executive Program Administrator for the City Manager's Office. So it is just regular business that we are, that we did go out to bid and award a new contract to. But it does include one additional piece from our regular maintenance. They'll be doing a tree inventory on top of our annual tree trimming. So there is a little bit of an increased price from our previous contract, but it is comparable to our previous expenditures.
So not a very large increase from the last years? Okay, thank you. I just, it's always, we always hear about tree trimming and protecting our trees and all of that, so I just wanted to double-check. Thank you so much. Happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart.
Well, because you keep asking questions, now I've got a question. So the tree trimming, the, the bid, does this include what we've talked about previously? The palm tree inspections? So will this bid include that cost?
It includes inspecting before trimming to make sure that there aren't nesting birds in there or things like that, so, and for safety. West Coast Arboris are here. If you'd like, they can probably better answer questions on the details of their practices and protocols.
Yeah, I just wanted confirmation, because that's something we talked about not long ago. So the Washingtonian inspections for safety and health of the tree will be part of this contract.
As part of the tree trimming.
Got it. Thank you.
And that's why I had pulled it, is because I couldn't tell from what was presented if that was a new, larger scope, like we had discussed. So I wanted to check. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and it looks like some have already voted, so we can go ahead and. Item 1S passes 5-0. At this time, we'll move to Item 1EE, which is, I believe, regarding our administrative contract agreement with the Palm Springs Chamber of Commerce on the Walk of Stars. Mayor Pro Tem, did you want a staff report or? You, but you both did. You all did, actually. So would, would council like a staff report at all, or do you just want comments? All right, go ahead, Councilmember DeHart. Okay. Councilmember DeHart, and then we'll go to Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, yes, thank you. And I appreciate Nona for being here today, and I want to send out some kudos, and, you know, truly well-executed program for these last five years. And if you've had the opportunity to attend any one of the ceremonies, they're extremely well-executed, and the chamber has done a great job. I think my comments today are just on content of the agreement. So maybe they're more directed to city attorney. And Jeff, so my, my concern is, I don't see where we've got a paragraph talking about the use of the name and the reference of the name, Palm Springs Walk of Stars. And, and I see it, it's different use, used different ways in different places, and I think we need to have it standardized and include that, that paragraph of, of reference and use in the contract. We're using Walk of, Walk of the Stars Palm Springs. The website is walkofthestars.com. I think we need to have our brand represented. Even though Palm Springs, Florida, isn't a city, it's a village, I think we need to say the City of Palm Springs Walk of Stars program. In the use, whenever we're using it, we need to constantly show that, you know, this is an incredible asset for the City of Palm Springs. And, and I think from a branding standpoint, we need to, we need to have that included in the, in the contract. And we are, the, the contract does include another 1,200 bucks, I, I believe, if I'm, for new materials for this new round. So if we needed to make an adjustment to the way it's looking, now's the time to do it, you know, with any of our materials, so we can have City of Palm Springs Walk of Stars administered by the Chamber of Commerce. We just need to get that defined, so not only does the chamber know the proper use, everybody within the city has that, that proper use. And then the only, the other item I noted when I was going through this is, we're defining ownership of the documents as of today in the agreement, or maybe going back five years of the materials that are prepared under this agreement. But what about the documents that existed prior to the first agreement? To show that that, we own those documents also. So anything that was in existence of Walk of Stars Palm Springs that may be in possession of the chamber or used as part of the program previously before the chamber administered it, that, that is included, that ownership is included in paragraph 8.3. And I don't know if it's clear enough when it says "other materials", if, if that's explicit enough.
So, Councilmember DeHart, certainly we can revise the agreement before it gets executed to clarify that this is the City of Palm Springs Walk of Stars and use that term throughout, and also communicate with the chamber that that's, that's really the city's intent moving forward. With regard to the ownership of the documents prior to the effectiveness of this agreement, I think that would be covered under the previous agreement, which is expiring. But again, we can coordinate with the chamber to make sure that they're keeping those documents and, and records available, and if we want to get them, then we can certainly get them.
Yeah, and I don't even know if there are any, if the chamber is in possession of anything from the prior administrators. Yeah, you want, you want to? So I'm referencing the, the prior organizers. And I don't know who has those archives.
I believe you do. I believe that they're, that we got the boxes out of storage, and they're now city's property.
Okay. That was a mistake. We probably should have had you.
And we're certainly willing to take that on.
That's good, thank you. Okay. And the app, the app was the other thing. Is, is that, and I think that's part of another contract with the city, isn't it? The, the Walk of Stars app?
Correct. That, that is, there is a third party that handles the app, that runs the app.
So those ownership considerations would be included in that contract?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks again for the good work.
Thank you. You might want to stick around until we're done. Thank you, Nona. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Nona. And I, first of all, in full disclosure, I want to say I was part of the Walk of Stars Selection Committee up until I was on city council. So I have been very closely involved, and I have to say, the difference that Nona and the team have made from the prior, prior system we had is just exponentially incredible. And I have watched it, and I've seen how it's, everything has been done. And, and I think this is a real asset for our city, and I think, you know, it's a very big marketing opportunity. So some of my comments here are basically tied to, tied to making sure that that always stays. So I did want to suggest that there be a council member on the selection committee, whether it could be voting or not voting, but there may be certain issues with, that they can weigh in on as well, if they're, that would be helpful. I also want to just ensure that the selection committee represents the diversity of our community. It certainly did when I was there, but I think that's something that we always want to make sure we keep on top of. I did want to, I noticed we added the addition of the LGBTQ history and archives to be involved, which I think is terrific. I do think those are the kind of things that maybe council should be aware of in advance. And we should also encourage other organizations, you know, if it's the Black History Committee or other, if they want to put forward names as well, that, that they could, they could potentially do that. I do want to make, I did want to see how we could make sure the honorees have a connection to Palm Springs. I know obviously the yellow人文itarians do. I don't know if it's defined about sports stars and entertainment, but I think most of the time they do. I just think we should try to enforce that. And I just want to go back to the app, which I think is really terrific, and I don't think enough people actually know about it, and I want to re, I think we should, if we need more to reinvigorate how that is presented and marketed. I know we're talking about additional communications, staff and funding in the city, so if we can help do that as well, I think it'd be great. And also with the actual ceremonies themselves. You know, those are major events for us to be able to promote ourselves, and they're all done really well, and they're very interesting, I have to say, and they're sort of very heartfelt and, and moving. And so I would like to see, you know, those get more promoted, somewhat by the chamber, but also by the city. And the other thing that has come up just from, from, from community is that whether spouses or employees of honorees can pay for the star, and I think we might want to look at something that says, maybe just, they can't pay for a majority of it. I know that sometimes people have the money and they feel awkward asking friends to do it, but I think as a precedent, it probably works out better so that nobody is seen as buying their star, which the selection, actually, and again, I was on the committee, and has continued to be great. So those are my comments for changes. I don't know how to incorporate. I don't know, I have spoken to, to Nona about these, so these aren't coming as surprises. And it's all from the point of view of making sure this keeps getting promoted as a, as a real city asset that we have. I don't know if I have to add those, if we have to vote on this, how should we do that? Anybody else have comments?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we will have to vote on incorporating those, those changes. Correct, city attorney?
I think if the council wants it memorialized in the agreement, you can, you can give us direction to do that, and we can include that before it gets signed.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. Thank you so much for taking over this program for us. We appreciate it. I also have been along for the ride from when we worked with you to set this up. So it is surprising to have the term pass, but really appreciate it. I think you've done an excellent job. And I an excellent job. And I didn't review any of my questions with you ahead of time, so apologize for that. Mayor Protem is on top of it more than I am. I think my bigger questions are just, like, I would love an update about the success of the program. So, you know, big picture thinking, like, what are we seeing? What is the long term vision for this program? You know, I know we set a certain amount of stars that you have to do per year, and a minimum and maximum. You know, I know some of the areas are getting crowded with a lot of stars. And so just like thinking through, like, are there other locations in the city that we want to do? I know we're really working on building out Indian or other areas of downtown, or this central business district. But yeah, I would just love like a presentation, I think. And I think that would be helpful for the community about the success of the program, and like a review of where we've been in five years. And then I'd love to think through really, which is up to you, you know, where we're going. So the future of the program, which I'm sure you have great ideas about, and you've really led that work. So I appreciate where you've brought the program from. I was a little surprised. So, so just from where we've been. So initially, we actually had tried to get council involvement out of this program and project. We didn't want any stars to be like, have any undue political influence, or even have, you know, any concerns about impropriety. And so we thought that it was best if council completely stayed out of it. I do agree that there's a value in having council involved, because it is a program and a partnership with the city. And so, you know, that's what a council member would probably bring to those conversations is, you know, how do we get out to the public what we've done? And what is our five year plan for this? And what's the build out look like? So I agree with the interest there. I just want to make sure we do it in a way where it doesn't seem like, you know, council members are influencing who gets stars. And I think that had been the original concern when we worked on this five years ago.
Yeah, and just to clarify that point, I don't think it should be non voting, but mainly just to sort of raise if there's a red flag about something. And really, not necessarily publicly, just with Nona or something, you know, there may be, it rarely has ever happened, if ever. So I think that's really just to, and also just to be involved and supportive and see what, what, what can be done to keep helping. I mean, you've run with this program for five years and grown it into something, you know, terrific. And that was my point, was not to influence and, and, you know, the way that the, the selections are done now is the voting is anonymous. And so council would not vote, and there is not discussion on it. So as far as I can understand, there wouldn't be any influence on it, but more of a red flag if, if there's something that, that wouldn't. Or, for instance, like on the LGBTQ archives, if we're doing that, that maybe we want to bring in another group and say, hey, are you interested in having a designation? Not that we want to make it more complicated. That was my reasoning.
So yeah, and I appreciate that and agree with you. I think a non voting member would be great.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
I think what I was going to say has now been said, but we were very intentional in not wanting any member of city council to participate in a decision over who did or did not receive a star. But council involvement otherwise is appropriate. But I'm going to take this opportunity to say thank you, Nona. Thank you to everyone from the chamber. You have been absolutely stellar in the fashion that this has been run. And as far as I'm concerned, I can't imagine anyone else being in charge. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So council do, how does council feel about the proposed recommendations that were presented by Mayor Protem Bernstein? Do we have agreement on, you can, you can make the motion, maybe make the motion and remind us of what you said.
Okay, so my, my motion is to approve this, and with just adding that a council member be a non voting member of the selection committee, that we limit the amount that spouses or employees can pay to, to, to less than a majority of the cost. And the honorees have some connection to Palm Springs, and the other things are just supportive. So those are not part of the contract. So those are really the three things that I would add. And.
Can I ask Nona a question?
Go ahead.
So, Nona, is that problematic, putting that parameter on who's making the donation?
I don't think so. Because I think, well, there have been situations where somebody's getting a star and the family has totally paid for the star, whether that's all the members of the family contributing, or just one person. It's, it's going to be a little difficult for us to know where the money comes from, especially if they walk in with one check.
Yeah, that's.
And say, you know, we've collected, we don't question where the money came from. So I'm not sure how we would monitor that necessarily, but it could be suggested on the website when they're filling out the application, that we could word it in a way, however you would like it worded, if that's important.
It's, there's, there's rules on the application that sort of, and you just say, there is rules on who can nominate as well, I think, right?
Right. So also this year, we implemented where you can't fundraise. It wasn't very clear on the application of you can fundraise before you're actually accepted. So that made it sound like if someone raised enough money before they were accepted through the committee, that they could actually pay for their star. So we updated that verbiage. So now it's very clear that there can be any public fundraising at all, not even by family, but just by any outside sources. So that kind of helped navigate people avoiding the thought of paying for their star prior to being accepted.
It feels, it feels to me like we don't need to include it, Councilmember, because the committee's going to approve a nomination. So that process is blind, and it happens, and the committee doesn't know where the money's coming from. So it's not until the committee approves this star going forward, that then the concern about money, where the money's coming from, may come up. So I don't know, I don't know if we need to have a guideline, because it's not material to the decision that the committee's making.
No, it's, it's not material. It's just more about the, the avoiding the perception that people are paying for their star. And I guess if we say the qualifications are there, it's okay. I think it's just, that was some of the history of it before Nona took over and cleaned everything up.
And maybe, maybe the, what you're saying about the, the language that was added this year about fundraising, maybe a few more words are added to that that talk about the intent of funds that are raised to help pay for the star are collective amongst supporters or, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that, too, just because like, you know, like when they bring a check in, if it's for 5,000 or 15,000, even if we highly suggested that a family member doesn't pay for it.
Yeah, you never know.
They'll go to an outside source.
A suggestion is fine.
Yeah. So I think suggestion would be great. Yeah.
Okay, so my three, I'm going to revise my motion to say that there be a council member, a non voting council member on the selection committee, that, that the honorees should have a connection to Palm Springs, and that we highly suggest that it's a, not a single member of the family paying for majority of the star.
And the paragraph about naming reference and use and acknowledgement of city of Palm Springs Walk of Stars.
And layman that accept it. Yes.
Great. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. I agree with all of those, except the one about the family member paying for the majority of the star. So can you, where, what is the current system and then what's being recommended? Because I'm confused about why we care how people are paying for the star, just like for an equity consideration. If you, I don't understand why we don't allow fundraising for a star, and it only allows.
Evan was only saying before you were approved.
Right.
Because we have in the past had people that put an application in.
Right.
They start fundraising, and the press gets a hold of it and says, oh, they're getting a star.
Right.
And they were never approved. So the wording is until you're approved. But then once they're approved, they're approved. So we wouldn't then say, oh, just one family member's paying, so you're not, you know, it's a.
Right.
It's a sticky slope, in a sense. We don't monitor where the funds come from.
And also, we, so, you know, for example, this year, we had one star that they brought in numerous checks of like 250, 250. And then we had one wrote a check for like 10,000 and then 5,000. So once they're, they're accepted through the committee, there's not really, you know, we don't monitor, other than is your 15,000 in 30 days before the actual ceremony. But I do know, you know, it started in September, but I do know previously there has been a perception, there was perception that people could just pay for their star. And I think that's what we're trying to avoid with just.
Right.
Recommending that they're truly a, you know, outstanding member of the community.
Right. And I think we do solve that through the qualifications and not for how it's paid for, because I think there's equity concerns. I'll work really hard for the next 40 years to earn my spot on the star. I'm gonna work really hard. I'll save my money, right? But it's possible that I wouldn't have $15,000 to afford the fee. And so I would need to publicly fundraise or whatever. And your family would want to include, be included. So I just don't quite understand why the restriction would be on funding versus just qualifications.
My point was basically that if we, we can run the risk where only people can afford to pay for their own star, get on.
Right. That's my concern, too. We share the same concern.
So the concern is the same. So that's why I was saying if everybody has to try and get it from multiple people, then it's a more equitable situation.
I see.
That was my reasoning.
Okay.
Whether or not that works out into effect, I could be wrong.
I share your concern. That's my exact concern, too.
But money doesn't come into the picture until the committee has already decided who's going to win, or who's going to be honored with a star. So equitable, it, there isn't inequity, because the committee is, is blindly going and quietly looking at these applicants to decide who's going to get selected. And they don't know who's paying for it. They don't know who's going to get selected, or, or how the money's being raised, or where the money's coming from. So.
Yeah, what I'm, my point is that everybody's on the same playing field of trying to have to raise money that only, basically, it can't have it so that only people with, with money can have a star. I know that they get, I know that everybody has the option to get, to get approved for one, but they still have to pay for it. And so we want to have, that's my, my point was trying to make a level playing field so that Councilmember Holstich can ask every council member she's worked with over the last forty, ten years to help pay for her star. But that, that was really my reasoning, so that it wasn't only for wealthy people to be able to get a star. And if I, if that doesn't come through in this request or suggestion, then it's, it's not something I'm going to hold this up on. But that was sort of the point.
But I think Evan said, putting it in that paragraph or adding it to the, the explanation about fundraising, and just add another sentence, that it is, it is the intent that this is a collective process with funds being raised in a broad, you know, broadly by friends and family and community members.
Great. Yes.
That's what I, I think. It is a suggestion in the agreement, as long with the other two points I made.
Yes.
That's my motion.
All right. So we have the motion. I think Councilmember Holstich, are you?
I tried to take it back.
Okay, I think you can do it now. You can second it if you'd like.
I tried, but I couldn't.
Okay.
Oh.
We're starting again. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Nona. All right, we, motion passes five zero, and we are done with the consent calendar. At this time, we are going to move to our Business and Legislative section. The next item on the agenda is item 3A, to appropriate funds for the Homeless Navigation Center and Early Entry Facility in the amount of $5 million, and Approval of Amendment Number Three to Professional Services Agreement with John Friedman Alice Kim Architects. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Councilmembers, good evening. Jay Verata, Director of Community and Economic Development. Some of you were sitting as council members when Barbara Poppy presented her report on homelessness. And her top priority was housing and more housing. And another of her top priorities, recommendations, that is, was to create new permanent supportive housing and bridge housing units. And as you're aware, the city of Palm Springs has been addressing homelessness for several years in a variety of ways. And that includes a homeless task force, crisis teams, the access center, emergency overnight shelter. And we also have several affordable housing projects underway, which include permanent supportive housing units to address Barbara Poppy's call for more bridge housing units. But what we do not have, and what has been identified as the missing piece among all services for homeless individuals being offered in Palm Springs, is housing for the homeless, which is why Palm Springs Navigation Center is such an important project for the city. Thank you. Here's a slide to reorient you with the navigation center site. I don't know how this works. Building C, Building Eight and Building 24 are the buildings on the site. And the locations of the modular residential units are shown in blue. And there is also a kids area, dog run, and plaza area. The middle, does it? What about the, the spotlight thing? But as you know, this project has encountered some challenges, such as material and supply shortages, increased interest rates, and cost increases. The design process for this project was extensive. Ten community meetings, surveys, lived experience focus groups, resident advisory committee, and shelter provider experience all contributed to the design of the project. But when all the ideas had been incorporated, and it came to light that the available funding would fall short, we were able to secure additional funding from the county and the city. So we moved forward and put the project out to bid at that time. This is around April of 2023. And as described in the staff report, the bid process revealed even higher costs. The next logical step was to cut costs. And in doing so, uses for Building Eight would change from offices, offices, services, conference rooms, multipurpose rooms, and case management to become an early entry facility. As we'll see on the budget slide, eliminating the offices and conference room saves significant amount of funding and created the opportunity to create this early entry facility. Building 24 was planned to provide 24 hour operation services, such as a kitchen, security services, recuperative care, and laundry. The value engineering for Building 24 eliminated the loading docks, office spaces, and recuperative care spaces. However, the recuperative care will still be offered in the navigation center, but will instead use the residential units. Building C, originally not intended to be part of this project at this time, but its existing offices will now be used and do not require much in terms of improvements. Additional value engineering measures were to reduce landscaping, hardscape, awnings, temporary power, and electrification of door entry systems. And in total, costs were reduced from 49 million to 39 million. So here's the slide for the budget, but I am going to come back to this one as we have our finance director and city engineer to help go over these items. Getting back to the Barbara Poppy report, recommendations for housing and more housing, and to create new permanent supportive and bridge housing units, and adding the early entry facility for the city of Palm Springs, the city would be on track to create a continuum of housing resources within the city. In this diagram, it shows the homeless assistance and intake at the access center, early entry facility for overnight shelter, modular living units for transitional housing, and affordable and permanent supportive housing. And here are some slides and renderings of how the Palm Springs Navigation Center And here are some slides and renderings of how the Palm Springs Navigation Center is expected to look. These are renderings. Look very realistic. The design team, advisory group, and Martha's focused on a trauma-informed design to create compassionate and empathetic environment to help individuals focus on healing and moving forward in the next phases of their lives. Plaza area, hardscape. You can also see some of the building elevations of what the project is expected to look like when complete. And here's more of the same. Few more slides showing what the site may look like, and the plaza corridor going down So these give you a sense of how the modular buildings will look when complete. And here is an aerial view of the residential units. Again, you can see there is a play area on the left side for kids. Just below that is a dog run area. There's the corridor, which leads to the service buildings, Buildings 8 and 24. And here's a street view of what the front of the buildings would look like from McCarthy. And here's another street view in front of the building, showing the possible color scheme and signage. And with that, council members, we have our team here for answering questions. Happy to consider any, any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Jay. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember DeHart.
Hey, Jay, how is wheelchair access, how, how was that consideration come into play for the multi-story units?
Well, as you can see, there are ramps that were going up to the elevation of the first-story units. There are also units that are single-story, and the units that are for handicapped individuals are gonna be on the lower levels.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton.
All right, thank you. Jay, and perhaps Joelle, the outstanding issue here is why this project was so dramatically underestimated in terms of cost, and why the substantial increase in costs.
Good evening, Joel Montalvo, City Engineer. So, this project went through several phases to get to the end result of the cost that we see before us today. The very first phase was when we were initially trying to, to retrieve or achieve award of a grant. So that, at the very initial stages, there was certain design elements that were not known. The site was not really known. The issues with the utilities were not known, but the grant needed to move forward. So at that time, there was a budget put together, applied for the grant, and we received it luckily, and we received the grant. So that was the very, very first phase of this project. Once we received the grant, we hired the architect consultants, and we started working with our team to hire a construction management team that would help us through the development of the project. So when we hired the architect, they developed plans. So we got to a point, about before February, in early February, where we had design development plans, what I wanna call maybe 40% to 50% plans. At that time, we already had our construction management team on board, essentially our contractor that was evaluating the plans, but still the site wasn't truly developed. The full scope of the utilities was still being investigated. The full plans of the architect had in mind, the hardscape, landscape, all that was still in its infancy, but we needed to really look at what those costs were. So our team put together a cost that we felt was, with their experience in similar projects, they were able to come, come up with the cost. But unfortunately, at that time, because the plans were not fully developed, we really fell short of what the true costs were going to be. So we, we really were not prepared at that point to really assume, or get to the point after we developed fully construction documents and then able to bid the job. So what we saw at the very beginning, the first number was an estimate. The numbers that came afterward were actual two costs from bidders. So I hope that sort of explains the progression of how the values went up.
All right. So I think, and this comes as no surprise to you, we can't be surprised here, up on council. And if there's gonna be an increase of cost, that has to be projected to us at the earliest possible date, so that's communicated to the public. Based on what you know at this point, where are we in terms of the reliability of the cost estimates that are being given to us this evening?
So the good thing is, today, we don't have cost estimates. We actually have cost. This is what the project is going to cost. Of course, and I will caution, this is a construction project. Construction projects always come with unknowns. We have built into our budget to the unknowns. We try to project, or have enough budget to try to address the unknowns during construction. For now, these are true construction costs.
And construction, if this is approved, will begin when?
This July, essentially. The end of July, we will be under construction.
And your best projection on when we will be complete?
So 100% complete. We're looking at June to July, because of long, very long lead electrical items, components that no matter how you push, you're not gonna get them any sooner. We anticipate that the site will be fully built by the end of February.
And first occupancy will come when?
Well, depends on how we use the site. If we're able to, we are, what we plan, together with the contractors, to use the existing electrical infrastructure to operate a portion, or essentially Building 8. And that, that is potentially at the end of February, we should be able to have first occupancy.
So from what I have seen, the reconfiguration of the office space looks to me to be something very appropriate, and something that is potentially going to save us some funding. The additional 50 beds that are being identified, is this a change in the scope of what was envisioned in the project?
Councilmember Middleton, thank you very much for that comment. It is a slight change in the scope. However, let me kind of walk through just a couple of points that I think are really important. What we're trying to be laser-focused on is your direction to us. We need to get help for people that are out in the streets, that are in the wash. Move with all due speed. Do, let's get going here. We don't have time to waste. People are in need. So that was our, that was our big, that was our big focus. The good news is, as Mr. Montalvo indicated, we have, really a month from now, or slightly after a month from now, we will start seeing site work being done on the site, dirt being pushed around, getting the site prepped for the modular units to be delivered. The modular units are on schedule to be delivered on, in September, and so that's on schedule as well. The reason, so thinking about that first point I make, we're trying to get people off the streets quickly. We know that there's a lot of folks out there that will be ideal candidates to go into these modular units, but we want to get them ready to go into those units. There's gonna be a lot of people that might need some assistance, getting ready to go into their own self-contained units. So what we're trying to do is, is figure out a way to get people off the street. Our partners with Martha's are experts at helping people make that transition, and getting them ready to go into their own unit. So we're working, that's one of the big focuses that we're working on. We know there's a continuation of care, you know, that people have to go through, and we talked about that a little bit. I think it's really important to mention that, really great thanks to Director Montalvo for the work that he's done. When those first initial bids came in, they were almost $15 million over budget. And we know, talking to contractors, builders, people all around the country, construction costs are going through the roof. And through a lot of his good work, he was able to really value-engineer that down to a much, a much lower number. We were not gonna come forward to council and ask for a $15 million overrun. That just wasn't happening. But, but working through that, he still had to keep in mind the obligations we have to the Project Home Key money. So we have to comply with that. We have to work with the county, Martha's, so that we can deliver a project that meets all of the criteria that we need to have happen. So what I will say to the council members is that the one, the one area that's still a little fluid right now, and it's been referenced a little bit, is we feel, we feel good about the construction costs. The bids are in. We know what, what people are gonna deliver. We're working with Martha's and the county now on the operations and maintenance costs. That, we, hasn't been completely worked through yet. We're working on that. I'd love to be able to bring back an operations and maintenance agreement to you, you know, hopefully as soon as when we come back from summer recess. So we have that. And I think we're all committed to really getting that button down. I think it's gonna be really important to us. So it's kind of a long-winded answer, but I wanted to make a couple of key points.
Very good answer.
Councilmember, if I could add on to that, in addressing the scope, because I know that came up under public comments. I think the council members that were here, and I think even Ron, Jeff, you know this as well, is that Building C was always meant to be a sheltering component. It just wasn't part of this phase of Home Key. So comments were made, too, about Martha's abandoning the, the emergency shelter. They didn't really abandon it. It's just once we started to do cost analysis of what it would cost to pop something up like that, many of us said, well, why would we spend $6 to $7 million on an emergency shelter, when we could just invest that money into the navigation center with the shelter component? So the scope really hasn't changed. And I will say, Jay had a really good slide about how people will be placed into the sheltering system, so they will go through the access center. That will address concerns about dogs that haven't been vaccinated, or any illnesses, and then placed into that sheltering system, and then run through the project as well. And if I can just add one final thing, is that, you all know I've been on this since the very beginning, and we were, as you know, the timeline to get the Home Key application in was very, very tight. And so to Joelle's point is that we came up with the budget that we thought was gonna get us there, but as you all know, too, is inflation, supply chain issues. We've had many affordable housing projects, including the Monarch, that have come back and asked the county for more dollars. So this is, this is a system-wide problem.
Oh, Greg.
Greg, thanks for coming up. If I could ask one question. I think many people lose sight of the fact that this is very much a city-county partnership. So could you remind the public as to what the financial commitment of the county
Thank you.
has been to this project?
It's probably the biggest city-county project that, it is, that's going on in the county right now. So the county is in now for about $15 million on this project. Originally, the land costs that we did, and then additional allocations of ARPA dollars, American Recovery Plan Act, sorry, as well as the Home Key dollars as well, that we leveraged as well.
And the state has also contributed significant sums
Yeah. And of course, the city has contributed as well. And that's a very rare thing in this county. Corona has done a great job of that, but Palm Springs is really, has donated more than any other, and we value this partnership. We're actually using not only this partnership, but the one with Corona as well, as an example and a model to take across the county. And it's actually being recognized in the state as a best practice model as well.
I've got two last questions. One of the things we've assured the public from day one is that this will not be a drop-in center, that there will not be individuals loitering in and around this center. What reassurance can we give to the public that that is not going to happen, and none of these changes are going to impact our fidelity to that commitment?
Yes, councilmember, you know, the whole idea is, you know, we wanna get people into a stable modular unit where they have their own space, they can have their own dignity living in their own space, and trying to get them ready, ready for that. The whole point of trying to, you know, trying to get some folks into Building 8 early is to help get them, get them ready and prepared. And there shouldn't be any reason, I know a lot of you have toured the facility, you've gone through the buildings, you've seen exactly what we're talking about. We wanna be very committed to, you know, what's been promised to the community, and be respectful of that. And, you know, we'll be working very closely throughout that process to make sure that, you know, we're doing this in the right way.
And that goes back to that system flow, so that, you know, the real drop-in place is the access center. The navigation center is a referral place as well. Martha's has an incredible track record of security and good neighbor policy, and they've made that quite clear that that will be the case, too, as well.
Lastly, and Scott, this comes as no surprise to you, I am concerned that we've asked folks on staff who already have full-time jobs, and then some, to do additional work. And I'll defer to your judgment as to the project management staffing that we need, but if there is additional resources in project management that you feel you need, you certainly have our support to get it.
We will, we're certainly going to be giving more thought to that. I've spent time talking to Flynn and Jay a little bit. Obviously, we all have a lot on our plates. Joelle and Jay have a lot on their plates right now, with a million things going on. We, you know, we have some resources in the budget, and we'll talk more about that for more economic development support coming forward. But, you know, we just have a lot of issues, and I appreciate that comment. And we will come back to you if we've, you know, as soon as we think we need those resources. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg, if you can, for the public, introduce yourself and your role.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Greg Rodriguez, Deputy Director with Riverside County Housing Workforce Solutions Department, priorly with Supervisor Perez's office. This has been a baby of mine for almost three years.
I know.
I do wanna highlight, too, the timeline was brought up, too, is that, well, conceptually, we started thinking about this two years ago. The Home Key application didn't go in until January of 2022. And then, it's not like nobody's been doing any work, right? Weekly meetings we've had, we're, every other week now, because we're pretty much, you know, until we get construction. But city staff's done an absolutely amazing job. The architects have been incredible. It's holding coil as well. It's just really been the supply chain issues and the electrical system. I've learned more about gear switches in last year than I care to know about, so.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could just make one other brief comment, you know, I see our friends from Martha's Village sitting out in the audience, and we've been working diligent, diligently with them throughout this process. So we're gonna continue on that. And like I said, I hope, you know, we're expecting to bring back an operations and maintenance agreement to you very, very, as soon as we, as soon as we can.
I could do one final thing, too, is I know it was brought up in public comments about services, and that this becoming a Roy's, that's the last thing that we will ever let happen as a county. And with the reconfiguration, none of the services are being lost. You know, is there less space and less community rooms? Yes, for now, but that can always be built at a later date. But none of the actual services, wraparound services for the clients, will be eliminated from this project.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart?
Greg, you know, we're hearing frequently, at least I'm hearing frequently, you know, you need to stop this project. It's a tremendous amount of money, and we need to, we need to come up with a different approach. Of the $31 million that we're getting, or that have been committed to the project from Home Key, the American Rescue Plan, Inland Empire Health Plan, how much of that $31 million would not be available if we started this over tonight?
Practically all of it. Obviously, the county would probably sell the land. We would have to forego the Home Key funding. We would have to forego the Home Key funding.
Which is 16...
It's the considerable pot, yeah. And then, I mean, I could technically go back to IHP and Melina and ask for a reallocation, but it will not eat the metrics under the Housing and Homeless and Senate program for the state, so we probably couldn't do that. It's also, I know people are frustrated, trust me, I'm just as frustrated. But the thing is, is this is the model that works. And so I, when they're telling us to stop this, I don't know what they want us to do if it's just to pop up a shelter, which is not the most effective way to treat homelessness at all. One, it just shows that the success rate is like between 10 and 20%. Where navigation centers like this with an element of transitional housing have a 60 to 70% success rate, and Martha's will attest to that. Additionally, is it is extremely difficult to braid funding like this. That's been the most work that I've had to do on this project, is to braid this funding. And to be honest with you, and it's a great question, is that we have timelines on when to spend ARPA dollars. So if this isn't going to go through and the public wants us to do another type of project, I, we would have to reallocate those ARPA dollars to other parts, other programs in the county, because we have timelines to spin those down. It's the same thing with the Home Key dollars as well, so.
And, and we're talking...
And the HAP dollars as well.
And we're talking about $31 million.
That we would probably never have the opportunity to get. That, if there was one good thing that came out of COVID, it's that we're being able to fund a project like this. These are not cheap, and you all know that, just to set up the three-month summer shelters that we did for the last, I think we've done them four years now in a row, that's a three to four to $500,000 operation for just that short amount of time. That's with no building costs, that's with some donated power. So, you know, it's, it's expensive. You talk to any other, and we have like, other Home Key projects in the state are experiencing the same type of funding issues as well.
Right, right, right. So thank you for that. So, and then we're seeing today that the city's investment is $8.1 million. City manager, am I looking at the right number?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're investing 8.1, and we have, we're standing to lose $31 million. So it's really a difficult position for us to be in to say, we're gonna, we're gonna try another model. So, thank you for that. And then the, in the public comments, we had a couple of questions about security, and, and really, are the pets and the intake and care of pets, is that addressed, that's built into this plan?
Yeah, Martha's will have operational plan for that as well. Again, the, you know, the access point is the access center, so that any issues that were brought up about, you know, whether pets needed vaccinations or they needed treatment, that can all be worked out through that and through, you know, the local animal shelter or, or care. So any pets that would be brought to the navigation center, even if they were in the sheltering type system, they would have basically been intaked at the access center.
All right. And what about security?
So security has been a topic of conversation since this project very first came about. Every type of center like this has an element of security.
And the public comment, city manager, they, they didn't see security listed in budgets anywhere. Where would the cost of security be?
Be part of the operational budget, so.
Yes, councilman, we'll be coming back to you with the operations and maintenance plan, you know, right after we're able to come back. And clearly, it's a partnership with the city, the county, our police officers are involved. Martha's will put a plan together. Jay?
Yes, councilmember, it is, it's part of the operational plan. And the draft agreements we've been working on, there's security allocations, we've been working closely with our police department to coordinate what's happening in the neighborhood, and even for working with the homeless individuals. So there's going to be a couple of different points of entry, which could be through Martha's at the access center, or the police department may be able to provide direct referrals also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mayor Protam?
So, just to clarify, how much was the budget for this when we first started?
So we're looking at each other. We're at 19 to 21 million was the estimate.
We're double what we first thought. So when we bought this site, we didn't know about the infrastructure upgrades necessary?
Um, which, which infrastructure upgrades are you referring to?
The site work, the extensive infrastructure upgrades necessary.
I guess the answer would be no. At, at the beginning, we did not know the, the full scope of the project and what truly infrastructure was going to be needed for it. As the plan developed, the infrastructure needs developed along with it.
Maybe let me jump in there and add a little bit to that. When we first contemplated purchasing the McCarthy site, the intent was to use the existing buildings. As we went through the Home Key grant process, it became clear that we couldn't use the buildings for living units. And so then we had to add the modular units to the site. With the addition of the modular units, that's what generated the need for additional power, which is one of the reasons why we need switchgear, new switchgear on the site. Absent the modular units, there is electricity and adequate services to the buildings, but with the addition of the modulators, that does increase the infrastructure needs.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to add too, since I've been along the project from the beginning, it is apples to oranges, because like you said, the site planning was different, the building, the intention of what was, which buildings would be used and for what were different. Originally, the costing was for the Home Key state application for funding. So that wasn't really a budget in the way of a construction budget would be. It was an estimate based on, I think, what did we have, a few weeks to apply for that? Two weeks, I think we worked on that. And we, I was just, you know, I was there, you were doing all the hard work. But, so that really wasn't accurate estimate of construction costs. So I just want the public to be clear, because we were saying, here's what we are envisioning, here is the dream state, please help fund us. We got $16 million from that project, and then we move forward and building it out and talking about what other services are needed and finding other funding. I mean, to be able to deliver, I think we've delivered 60, $36 million in outside funding from, to the city of Palm Springs, from all these different agencies and organizations. So it's become a, a different braid of a project than we originally intended because of the opportunity.
And it's important to note too, that in the overall budget, that's including some operational costs, it includes the price of acquiring the land. And Mayor Protam, as well, is that ideally, could this been done in a different way, would have made my life a little bit easier, but we had a very nice member of our city purchase the property before we were really ready to pull, or to purchase it through the county. So again, to Councilmember Holst's point, we were on that really short timeline on the Home Key, and somebody had purchased the property that we had to make sure that we were buying for. So ideally, if, you know, if I was buying a lot to build a home, I would have done a little bit more infrastructure diligence. But it really is because of the way that the project changed and the, and the addition of the modular units as well.
And we needed to have this, that site, this specific site to get the Home Key money?
Yeah.
So, and we hired an outside consultant to assess the property? Is that right? For the engineering?
On the engineering.
At that time, we utilized an architect to help do some preliminary site plans and costing. Infrastructure-wise, we had a site assessment that was done, but as Deputy City Manager Fag explained, the, the project at that time did not include the extensive use of the open area, which now requires the utilities where the living facilities would be. It was contemplated as congregate living inside Building C essentially.
I see. And during the process, we said Tilden Coyle came up, and they noted a significant number of the regular contractors did not bid on the project. Did we know this was happening as they were putting it out to bid? This was going to happen? There was timing issues and all kinds of things that they would just wait to get their bid back?
Right, so as the project developed, the, the contractor, Tilden Coyle, was putting out the bids, and they just weren't getting the typical bids that they normally get. So that's, that's kind of what that is referring to.
But did we know that during the process, or just when they came back and said, this is what it's going to cost?
During the process of the bidding, or, well, the bids have to, you know, they run, so what we did was we hired a construction manager at risk, so a contractor to do the bidding for us. They were running the bids themselves, and they opened the bids, they put it out, and as they were, the bids were coming in or closing, then we started figuring out what was happening. So I guess I'm not really sure how to answer your question, whether we knew what was happening during the time. These are multiple different trades that are being bid all at the same time, so there's many different variables that are occurring. So what I do know is the contractor reached out to 250 different other trades to try to get people to come in and bid. So there was, they do weekly outreach, so they do a good thorough job to try to get folks to come in and bid on the project.
Okay. I have some questions on the Building Eight now, with the 50 beds that's in it. So from February until, until, I guess, July, that's the, that's the facilities that they're going to have, what's in Building Eight? Because the other building won't have power? Or will it have some power?
So, working with the contractor, being with Tilden Coyle, we're able to segregate the existing electrical infrastructure to be able to use and power up one of the buildings. Typically, you'd try to upgrade your entire electrical infrastructure to run your entire site, but because we, we've known that we want to operate maybe a portion of it, they're working, they've actually had to reconfigure, rebid, work with their electrical contractors to keep the electrical infrastructure online while they're still constructing and while the permanent infrastructure comes in.
Okay, so in Building Eight, when we have these 50 beds, we'll have bathrooms and showers and places for them to eat?
So I can, I'll turn that over to Jay to answer. So these are details we're still working out with Martha's. One model is that the individuals coming to the access center will be coming, I'm sorry, coming to the early entry facility will be coming from the access center. The access center currently has showers, where those individuals could shower before they come over, spend the night. And then, under this model, they would leave in the morning. They would be transported by shuttle back to the access center. So there, they would literally be staying over the night at the, at the early entry facility. Food will be catered in for those who are there under that model, so yes, there would be food there. But this would all be occurring in Building Eight during that time from, before the power is energized in, in all the other areas of the facility.
And so we're still envisioning, once we have the modular units ready with the 80, that these 50 people will be bused back to the access center during the day?
Still, that's still being worked out, as to what makes the most sense at that point in time.
Okay. And the, we don't have the operational cost, but I think we talked about, we have grants for what is basically like a couple of years to operate?
That's correct.
But that operational estimate was based upon without the 50 beds that we had last year, or whenever that was?
Well...
In '22?
If it's using the earlier estimate, we could probably go three and a half years with the, with the grant funds we have.
They had, they had estimated two and a half million for the year to operate, but that was with 80 units. Now we could have another 50 beds, and now it's a year later, so that could potentially be double that.
It's, it's additional staffing, but then there's also overlap, because we're not going to be having twice as many counselors and employment training staff available when everyone's at the same facility.
And we're reducing the size of the kitchen now, and, and the meeting room, and the common dining room in Bill, in the other building, in Building 24? Is that correct? It said in the staff report, we're reducing the size of the kitchen and the community space?
You know, the kitchen has, we've, we're continuing to design and redesign to meet the needs that, that would best operate this facility, and I think we're almost back to the same-sized kitchen as was initially designed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. And so we don't, the operational budget, we're not sure what that's going to end up, and we're, there's other construction costs are always iffy when we start building, right? My concern is that if we approve my $5 million, we're going to end up having another $10 million next year that we end up having to spend.
Well, keeping in mind, you know, the construction costs are, are bid and contracted, close to being contracted, so those costs are, are pretty closed. Operationally, we do have 8.3 million to work with to help cover those costs for the initial year, two years, whatever that may be. There's likely a ramp-up period when there's not as many individuals on site, and we don't know what that might be. Maybe, maybe that's wrong, maybe open the doors and there's a huge demand, so, you know, again, we're working through those scenarios in, in the opening months to see what those costs might be. But, you know, as, as Greg has mentioned, there's been an enormous amount of funding made available through grants, and the state of California has announced another round. And I should add, there's a lot of grants that the city is not eligible to apply for. They're only available to COCs, which is the county entities that apply. Oh, and look at this.
If I can add in too, there is huge potential through CalAim, the new Medi-Cal, for billing for services on this. We're working very closely right now with IHP and Melina. We're actually, the county is working with a consultant that worked with Alameda County to actually help bill the health plans for such types of services. Many of our providers don't have the capacity or their technical expertise to do that kind of medical billing. We're more advantageous in Alameda County because we have our own health system, and so we already do that billing. And IHP and Melina are both willing to maximize what they're called community supports under CalAim. So operationally, I'm less worried operationally now than I was when we started this almost three years ago.
Right, no, and I, I remember, I remember when you first started it, and I, I have such appreciation that you were able to get these funds, because I, I give you personal credit for getting them.
Thank you. And I, I get the concern about operational costs and having to come back for another allocation. I think what we've really tried to do as a team is really, to Joelle's point, is that these are, these are actual bids, these are not estimates. And I do believe that with even redesigning the services, that I don't anticipate it would be double what the operational cost is, and I would be comfortable, I can never guarantee anything, but I wouldn't anticipate we'll be back for another allocation next year.
Okay. And I just want to point out a couple of things. I think the design of the modular units, I mean, I haven't seen it, it looks much better than what I thought it was going to look like, and I think kudos to, to whoever, to the designer, and I think it really, that does look really nice. And I also agree with Councilmember Middleton, this is a big project. And I know, I know all three of you have a lot, a lot of other projects going on, and I would, I would sort of second the concept that if there's somebody who can be, this could be their sole focus. That would make a lot of sense to me, because it just seems like this is a tremendous project for any one of them to manage or get the funds or deal with, or any, and I know, I have a small idea how much work everybody has to do, but I, what I see is huge. So I'm just, it just seems like we need, we're sort of stuck that we kind of have to do this, but I don't kind of feel like we have a full plan ready to go, which is what makes me very nervous about, about approving this. And I think, you know, the, the community has raised a lot of concerns that this is going to be a, you know, bed, a shelter, they're going to bus them back to the, to the, to the access center, and then what happens? And then you could have a period later on where you have 130 people on site at one time. And I'm not sure that we're fully ready to understand what that could, what could contemplate. But those are my concerns. I'll stop for now, but I'm rambling.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstage?
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work on...
Thank you so much for your work on this. You know, I just want to add sort of where we've been, and so, and I appreciate the community coming in, and thank you for your public comment, and really appreciate you, and I, and I just want to explain sort of, because I, I appreciate the concerns that this has changed, or that, you know, we weren't initially including a 50-bed, although I think that was initially always thought that we would have some sort of component like that, but I just want to explain. So, you know, in 2017, we had, 2016, Roy's had closed, we had no emergency shelter in the, in the western Coachella Valley, the nearest one being Indio. A lot of our residents were asking for us to do something and build a navigation center. We started really in 2017. Regionally, we hired Barbara Poppy to do an analysis of our entire region and the homelessness system, and so what were the gaps? You know, so many times in my six years here, people have just asked me to build an emergency shelter, and we said, no, we're doing the research to analyze what actually are the gaps and what is needed in our whole homelessness system. And so Greg and I have been working on a navigation center for years and years. We work to get buy-in from the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, all of our cities and tribal partners, and Greg, you know, I'm going to name this in my head, the Greg Rodriguez Navigation Center, because you personally have really found the resources and delivered county resources and dollars to us, and worked with IHP and Melina, and that's really incredible work. And we are a state model for how to get this done, but we have been figuring it out as we go, because the city, when I was elected, we were not doing any real work internally on homelessness, and we've worked really hard with the county to take more of that on and have a real partnership. And so it's really amazing, you know, we didn't have Martha's operating in the, in Palm Springs. We had very few professional operators of homelessness services. We worked really hard to give Martha's a grant so they could open an office in, in Palm Springs, they could see the need, and then to build a navigation center. So, you know, it is shocking sometimes how long it takes to get work done in government. We're not meant to move fast for a reason, but we have really come together on this, and it's been really incredible to see our staff and county and all the Martha's and all the providers. So I, I just want to say that because imagine, I mean, just five years ago, four years ago, we had almost nothing. We had no overnight shelter for the summers, we had no overnight shelter for the winters. We've propped that up together with Martha's taking that on, and so it's really amazing just the progress, I would say. I think we're talking about this wrong, because there's this actually multiple, multiple projects in one. And so when people read the news, or they go on Nextdoor, and I keep going to neighborhood meetings, and they say, oh, I'm going to take $40 million and divide it by the number of units, and I say, you can't do that math, you doesn't, we're not just investing in units, we're doing two big buildings and modular units, right? And so if you look at those numbers, it actually seems pretty reasonable for what costs are. We're doing building eight for, so I'm looking at your totals, $3.5 million, that's a big building with a number of services. We're doing building 24, I do think we should rename them, because the numbers make no sense. I appreciate that it's ours, but it just makes no sense to my brain. We're doing that one. Oh, I'm reading the wrong numbers. Building eight, $753,000, building 24, $9 million, but that's that huge building with a number, and I walked through this originally, I mean, these buildings are not habitable, and so it's going to take a lot of work to get there. We're doing modular units for $5.5 million, we're building out the site. So this really, we have to think about it and, and explain it to the public, that we're not getting, you know, 85 units for $40 million. We're building an entire navigation center, which is the dream that we've been working on for six-plus years, is a one-stop shop where people can go escape homelessness, they can get a roof on, over their heads, they can get medical care, they can get employment services, they can get legal aid, whatever providers come into that site, and they can work with a provider like Martha's, that's incredibly successful nationwide, I mean, known nation, nationally for your excellent work, your success rates of getting people into permanent housing are really incredible. We never had that at Roy's, we weren't getting people into housing. So just for the public, it looks like success, but it might not be actually success, and that's what we're tracking. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm proud to support this. I appreciate that it is over budget. Any developer working on a project right now is significantly over budget. I think you've done a good job, value engineering, really appreciate it. But I just want to make sure when we're talking about it, this is multiple buildings, modular units, playground, you know, dog run, I mean, these are incredible investments in this site. So just want to be clear about that. I think the concerns from the community are really valid and heard, and that's why we had created a community council to get those concerns and work with the community. That's in part why the project is so expensive, because we had had a wish list from the community that then went included, and so we want to, you know, so we will continue to work with the community and heard the, the concerns. I want to say just one more thing I've learned in going through this project, is we had just been working on the navigation center and the temporary, temporary housing. We then heard from Martha's that that is not sufficient, that it's not, that we have a step three or a step two, the transitional housing, but people need a place to go in between, and that it won't work the way we originally envisioned. And so that's why, I mean, the access center is so minimal, we really need a place for people to go. And I did work with staff, and here, it doesn't make sense to invest $7 million in a separate site when we already want a one-stop shop. And so that's where we are. I think I appreciate the neighborhood's concerns, and we made really true promises to the community, that this won't impact you, we're going to work on security. Martha's is a great partner, they operate all over the Coachella Valley, and they have a great track record, and we know, you know, we're going to continue to work for them and, with them, and this isn't a drop-in center in the way that Roy's was. So I think overall, those are just my comments. I did share the concerns about the value engineering. I just don't want to cut off our nose to save our face, or whatever the saying is, you know, I want to make sure that we're putting recuperative care, if that's what we're going to be able to bill, to cover for the costs of some of the operating expenses. You know, I want to make sure we're not taking out things that are really important to make the project workable, but it looks to me like you've done a really good job of picking and choosing. And I just want to say one more thing, because the other question I get is operating expenses, and I know that's a really good talking point for the public to say, oh, you're building a project without the operating expenses? We actually have $8 million here for operating expenses? That's significant, that's significant. I don't think Martha's has that in, in the bank for your other facilities that you do. And, and there's a lot of state funding. So I am also not very concerned about the operating expenses, because we have $8 million already earmarked, and there's so much more state funding, and there will be more. So, so I feel, I know it's, it's never good to, it never feels good to have a project over, and I share the concerns about the bidding, like, please let us know if we, you know, need to rebid or need to have more bids or something like that, but it sounds like there's a lot of due diligence, and I agree with, thank you to staff who's working incredibly hard on this. We don't have dedicated homelessness staff doing this, it's all of our city staff, and it's beyond, you know, your normal job. So I agree, like, I care about staff capacity and making sure that you're, that we're doing that work and, and supporting you, so that everyone can do their other things that we have to do for the city. So, thank you, you know, I know this has been building the ship while you're flying it, because the state funding and county funding, and this is a really complex project, and so I applaud your work on it, and thank you for making it work.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
If it suits the balance of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I just have one question for the city manager. If we didn't approve this additional $5 million, what would happen to the project?
Well, if we, if we don't approve this funding, you heard what Mr. Rodriguez said about the risk to future funds. Obviously, our real goal is to try and keep the project on track, get it finished so we can get help to people who need to get off the streets and, and get some help. And I think it's really important to emphasize this continuum of care concept. So we, we talk about having some beds for 50 people in building eight. Those are likely to be the folks that go into the modular units, and then is there, you know, that's just 50, we've got space for 85 people in the modular units, so there's still more people. And then does that allow some other people to get off those streets and sleep in those beds? We don't expect the people in the 85 modular units to live there for the rest of their life. Hopefully, we move them into permanent supportive housing, affordable housing, they move on in a better way, and then other people move into those units, and so we get that flow going of what we need in the community to get, get help to people.
Right. So we need this $5 million in order to make all of this happen, right? I want to just uplift quickly that we got public comment today from someone who identified themselves as unhoused, and the great need that we have for resources here. I personally spoke with someone under 18 yesterday about the need for this and how important it is, and there wasn't just one person in that family. So I, I really want to emphasize the huge need here, and that there are people who are experiencing homelessness in our community, who you would never expect to even be experiencing it. I certainly didn't expect either of the people that I spoke to to say what they said. So you're walking by them, you're buying gas from them, you're, they're people who are working in our community, who are doing their very best to survive, and that's why we need these services so badly, and it is frustrating, but we are doing everything we can to make this project successful, to mitigate any impact to the neighborhoods. And I will remind the public, I live very, very close to that project as well, so I will be there, I will see it, I will be driving past it every single day, as I have been for the last several years. So we have, we have one more comment from Mayor Protem, and then we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I just, and I do want to say, I, I appreciate all the work. I mean, this, the, the amount of money does make me very nervous, and I think we really have to, the fact is we have no choice but to go forward, and we need to have this, partly because we're so invested, but partly because, because people really need a place to be able to live and, and be safer, and ideally get them off the streets, which I think is, is the, the goal here. What I would just reemphasize is that we have to make sure that we are on, we keep our costs going, that we keep moving forward, because we can't have more delays and more cost increases that are unexpected, because I think we could run into some real problems, and we just, and whatever that takes, city manager, whatever, you know, to make sure that we have, they have, our staff has the support they need, that Greg has to make sure that we are on top of this, that we're looking ahead. We need to talk to Martha's to find out really what the operational costs are going to be sooner rather than later. So I don't want to delay this, but I do have all those concerns, and, and again, I thank you for all the work, and I'm glad the design looks good for, for the modular units, so thank you.
Thank you. So we can, we have a motion and a second, if we can all log, log our votes. Thank you. Motion passes 5-0 for item 3A. Council, how are you doing? Can we move on to the next item, or do you want a break now? Break? Okay. We're going to take a 10-minute break, so we'll be back at 8:21.
We're going to take a 10-minute break, so we'll be back at 8:21. Okay. We are back from our recess. And the next item on our agenda is Item 3B for consideration of the establishment of a city council policy providing a certain percentage of transit occupancy tax, or TOT, to be set aside and used for future affordable housing needs. And Chris, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm going to present the Transit Occupancy Tax Set Aside to Affordable Housing. I'm first going to talk a little bit about the TOT. The municipal code, Palm Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 3.24, guides the city's collection of the TOT within the boundaries of the city. There's two rates for TOT. One is 13.5% for group meeting hotels. The other is 11.5% for non-group meeting hotels. The 11.5% also is for vacation rental properties and vacation rental agencies. Always a high point I like to talk about is the TOT revenue reached a historic high in fiscal year '22 at $54.3 million. We're on track this year, fiscal year '23, to reach just under $50 million. So, seems like we're going to have another strong year for the TOT tax. The $50 million that we are looking at for fiscal year '23 is comprised of three types of revenue. $16.2 million that we're estimating for vacation rental property, properties. That's the owners and the agencies. $14 million for the non-group meeting hotels. And then the $20 million for the group meeting hotels. Now, I want to talk, oh, I forgot about this. The trans, this is a slide that shows the trend in TOT since 2010. You can see that we've had good steady growth. It's pretty clear when we had the COVID-19 pandemic, then how we bounced back from that in the last couple of years and that we're projecting TOT through '25 to be pretty steady. And then talk a little bit about why we're here tonight. The city council a while back directed staff to bring back for council consideration a proposed policy that would provide for the set aside of a certain amount, certain percentage of the vacation rental TOT for affordable housing. The vacation rentals, agencies and property owners pay 11.5% tax. And Palm Springs Municipal Code states in 3.24.03 that the TOT is, from the 11.5% tax is to be split into two categories. 7% goes to a community promotions fund and 4.5% to the general fund. The community promotions fund has specific uses that's stated in the municipal code. It's kind of broad, but it is stated for specific uses for advertising, publicity, promotion, capital projects, debt retirement, operating expenses normally payable out of the library fund and the Parks and Rec Fund of the city. So, knowing that, the 7% of the 11.5% vacation rental TOT cannot be set aside for affordable housing. City staff is recommending that we take a percentage of the 4.5% that goes to the general fund. We're recommending 25% of the 4.5% be used to set aside for affordable housing programs. So, how is that calculated? So, the example is, we're expecting about $16.2 million in vacation rental TOT for this fiscal year. 4.5% of the 11.5%, so it's 4.5 divided by 11.5 is 39.1%. $16.2 million in estimated vacation rental revenue times the 39.1 gives us about $6.3 million that goes to the general fund. You take 25% of that, that means about $1.6 million would be set aside for affordable housing. And then one last point to note is in the resolution, we are recommending that this resolution be retroactive to July 1, '22. That means if approved, we could use the funds, vacation rental funds from this year, this fiscal year, and begin to set aside funds for affordable housing immediately. And with that, I will ask council if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. And I realize for the record, you are Chris Mooney, our Director of Finance.
Thank you for that.
Since I didn't ask you, I asked everybody else to do that. All right. Mayor Protem, did you want to start us off since this was your request?
Well, it was my request the first, the first day I came into office. So, I'm really glad to see it happen so quickly. But I think this is great work. I don't have a lot of comments other than I, I would actually like to see it go to 50% to be about $3 million per year. And I agree with it that it should go back to July 2022. I think we should start looking at how it's spent so that, I don't want to make this a slush fund, but I know lift to rise is a great catalyst program and that funds can sort of be used to keep going and helping a lot of programs going forward, which is a great consideration. And that it should not just be seen that existing projects can go out and ask for more money. It should really be as a way to create new affordable housing. I don't think we need to put that in here, but those, my main comment about this would be that it go back to July 21, 2022 and that we look at raising it up to 50%, which would be about $3 million per year. Those are my comments. I'm glad to see it here so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstage.
Thank you. So, appreciate that, this work. Thank you to Mayor Protem for leading it and making this your first request on council. Really appreciate that. I had also been sort of talking to stakeholders and asking for this, though didn't do formally. So, you beat me to the punch and I so appreciate your leadership. I just wanted to ask, we had discussed this about if it should be a percentage or if it should just be a straight amount in terms of what's easy to administer. We don't want to waste staff's time or a lot of resources in trying to predict what TOT will be every year and then trying to budget from that. So, could you just speak to if you think it should be a percentage? If you think we should just set a revenue, a direct allocation from the funds? I will say when I was initially conceptualizing this, I thought it would be for the overall TOT, not just vacation rental TOT. TOT overall has affordable housing impacts because even though it might not be taking housing offline like a vacation rental might, hotels require people to work in them who are often, you know, making, who need to afford housing in our community. And so, I think that initially I had thought of it as an overall TOT. Initially, I had had talks with some stakeholders about actually increasing the TOT amount if there was room comparable to other cities to actually direct that money to a housing fund. So, increasing TOT overall would require the voters to approve. So, that is complicated. But I just wanted to flag, you know, 25% of the small percent of vacation rentals is very miniscule compared to if we thought, you know, we looked at TOT overall. And I appreciate we have a very large budget and lots of things to fund. But, so could you just, so I would definitely support a $3 million annual amount. I think, yeah. So, could you just speak to percentage versus total amount and what's easiest to administer and what you think is the best policy?
Yeah. I mean, if the council said, you know, $3 million, that's probably the easiest. However, this is not a difficult calculation. We do track vacation rental revenue, although manually it is tracked every month. So, we have a, an idea of what it is at the end of the year. This would be an annual calculation. We do it one time a year at the end of the year. So, again, you know, we would just take whatever we have in, in June, make that one-time calculation, very simple, and, and we would set it aside. So, either way, I guess I'm saying it's, it's not, it's not much administrative time.
And I appreciate setting a percentage allows for it to increase and is better for council because then we won't have to come back and change it if it's set at three, but we get a lot more. And then could you sort of speak to the vacation rental versus the overall TOT? So, Mayor Protem, is that what you had asked for? Is a percentage of vacation rental? Okay. So, I had initially, when I heard that, I think I thought of it was overall TOT.
I had initially asked for as vacation rental. And, and in part because although you're right that they, that all of, all of hospitality requires workers, that there's more direct comments from the residents about vacation rentals taking away housing. And even if it's not necessarily affordable housing, there's still compression in the market. So, this was sort of a way to address it. I also think that given that there are efforts from the state to, to do other things, to tax vacation rentals, that this is a great example to say, we're doing the program ourselves. And we probably will then ensure that the money actually is spent locally versus at state decision level. So, that was my reasoning for that.
Thank you. I think that this is a good start and so I'm happy to support it. I'd love for us to do some of that analysis and that's really economic development work that we need to do about our TOT in comparison to other cities and what our market can bear and what, you know, some of our stakeholders think we can bear. Because I would love to see a, a real direct revenue stream to housing since the state has taken away redevelopment and we really have no revenue source to fund housing year over year. It's just been us allocating it. And this is, this is a resolution, but it can be changed by any city council in the future. So, really this is sort of an accounting measure. It's not a permanent policy. You heard I'm working for my Walk of Star in 40 years. I like permanent policies that we know will continue on in the future when we're long gone. So, I think this is an excellent start. I really appreciate it. I'd love to see us do that economic work about our TOT overall. If we do want to, you know, start to even talk about if there's room to increase it, if we would want to make this more permanent than a resolution. And I would support it being 50% as well. And then we've done a very deep dive into the Community Promotions Fund, which is the first time I ever heard that term, which is bad because we've been doing this for a while. And I'm really supportive of us following the ordinance or changing it. So, if it says that we should be using it into the Community Promotions Fund, it's a really cool idea to support Parks and Rec and community events. And I think that's our council's goal. So, yeah, would love, I think it's again, just an accounting because we already spend that amount of money on community events, but to actually account for it and show the community. Because we have asked our community multiple times for tax increases and they've chosen to tax themselves again and again to support community services. And I really just like to show that accounting for them. I've raised that with Measure D to police and fire, making sure that, you know, we're showing the community how much we've taxed and then how much it go, what it goes to. So, yeah, proud to support this. Thank you so much for your leadership. Thanks to staff for figuring out how to do it.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. I support the proposal as recommended to us by staff. I am certainly open to further conversation at a later date as to whether or not that percentage should be something different than 25%. But I would be very reluctant to increase that percentage over the recommendation at this time. I'd like to see some confirmation as to how the money is being used that we collect and that we gain some experience with this program before moving forward beyond the recommendation that we receive from staff. As to whether or not it be a set amount or a percentage, I'll follow up on what the Mayor Protem said. In the discussions that we've had with the League of California Cities on SB 584, there was very specific reference on multiple occasions to Palm Springs considering a specific percentage of TOT to be devoted from vacation rentals to affordable housing as a much stronger alternative from public policy. alternative from public policy because the money collected would remain in the city in which it was actually being earned. So I would like us to move forward with the recommendations from staff and then come back at a later date after we've learned how well we've done this.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I really, I support the idea. I think it's a great step forward for us. And I true, I also support the staff recommendation. And I like the percentage because we can, the, the set aside can benefit from an increase and, and on a good year when we've got increased TOT coming through. So I like that. But I'd like to, as Councilmember Middleton said, I'd like to see a year, let's get a year under our belt and start to see programs where we can allocate some of this money. And then look down the road at increasing it to a higher percentage, and maybe it's more than 50. But let's just see how the program, how it can start off. So I'm, I support staff recommendation.
Thank you very much. Chris, can you tell us, would it even be possible at this time, since our budget is just two items away, to, to have it be a bigger amount? Is that possible even in this current scenario?
Yeah, it, it is. You know, I mean, in, in fiscal year '25, you know, we're going to operate as a surplus and, and, you know, fiscal year '24 may be a little pressured, but still we've got fund balance to use. Fiscal year '23, we've got surplus estimated. So, so in most cases, in most years, we would have surpluses that we would just take from the surplus and set it aside.
Great. And then if we were to move forward with staff recommendation and wanted to increase the amount for the next fiscal year, would we just come back in this similar fashion?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we, we could come back with that, with another recommendation next year to, to take it to 50% if that's what council directs.
Okay, and could we do 25% for this year and say we wanted to do 50% for the next fiscal year?
Yeah, I think we could.
Okay. Thank you very much. I mean, I'm definitely in support of this and, and would love to see more funding go in. I don't know if my colleagues have a recommendation. We've, we've heard a few different options on the table. It's up to me, okay. All right. Well, in that case, if you're, if you're saying that we can do 50% now and that it won't be a problem, and that brings us up to approximately $3 million for this current fiscal year, and could be more, could be less.
Yeah, I mean, true. It, I mean, it's really dependent on the TOT and what happens with that. You know, you have a down year, you have less money, better year, more money. But I'm estimating that, that 50% would be in the vicinity of 3 million.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll, I'll go ahead then and make a motion that, that we do 50%. But I do want to include that we are taking those measurable actions that Councilmember DeHart and Councilmember Middleton raised and really being able to figure out exactly how this money is being used and, and what the impact is overall. I think that is really important that we're analyzing this each year and, and not waiting until many years pass before we realize we have money just sitting around or, or it's not as valuable as we thought. So that, that's my motion, and if we have a second. Oh, yeah, and it goes back to, to July 2022.
And just for clarification, that 50% would remain in place until the council changes it. You're not proposing that we move it back down to 25 next year, is that correct?
No, at this time, I'm just proposing the 50%.
Okay.
And see how we do from there.
Yes. Just because you flagged that for me, thank you. So we have, so where is this money going and how's it going to be separated out?
So it's going to be, remember how the CalPERS set aside that we do every year? And we, we call it an assigned fund balance. We separate it out from the unassigned fund balance. This will be treated the exact same way. It's actually officially called a committed fund balance since we have a resolution in place and it's a, we take an official council action. But that's the way it'll appear on the fund balance schedule as a separate item similar to the CalPERS set aside.
Because we've allocated, I mean, just 25% and 50% sounds like a big difference, but you know, we allocated $10 million last year for housing. And so then we set that aside for housing purposes. You know, we had originally actually had a housing authority, right, to do this work? So I'm just trying to think through, it'd be great to have a separate fund because I think if we do pass an inclusionary zoning or allow in lieu fees, then we would want a place for that all to go. And I think that's the goal is to have it truly, I'm not an accountant, so you can tell me, but in a fund where it's used and it can't get, go back into the general fund and be used for other purposes.
It would still be part of the general fund, fund balance, but it's a committed balance that's, which means it would take council action to overturn it and to remove it out of the committed category.
Great.
So we'd have to bring back another resolution saying, or with council's approval to remove the commitment.
Great. And I think the, the analysis is important and well-taken, but just to be clear, like we frequently give one to 3 million or more per affordable housing project that comes forward. So it's not like general fund where we don't know where this money is going to be going. It's going to be really clear, I think, for the community and for the council, we're giving this to affordable housing projects, we're doing this to develop housing, you know, and if we need to set some guidelines around that, please let us know.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If we can do a vote. I think Councilmember Middleton, yours is not logged. Oh, I see, I'm sorry about that. I didn't mean to do, to rush you. Thank you. Motion passes four to one. Thank you, council. At this time, we will move to item 3C for consideration of the establishment of a city council policy establishing a minimum fund balance in the city's general fund. May we have a staff report, please, Chris?
Thank you. So a good time to present a policy like this would be, you know, now when we're getting ready to present for the, the budget for the third time and hopefully adopting it tonight. This is a fund, establishing a policy that if council approves it, will establish a minimum reserve for the general fund, fund balance. And just a little, a couple of points, a positive fund balance is really an accumulation of general fund surpluses. And establishing a minimum reserve policy for the general fund is a best practice. It's under the adopted financial policy cited by the Government Finance Officers Association of Ameri, no, Government Finance Officers Association. It's a GFOA for short. Adopting a sound financial policy, you know, we've been talking a little bit about debt issuance in the, hopefully near future for a fire station and a library or, or whatever else we had decided to add to that list. And having good, sound financial policies would help us with our S and P rating to maintain it at a double A or even strengthen it. So a strong rating does lower our borrowing costs. Staff, we work closely with our financial advisor Suzanne Harrell, who you all have met in the last couple of meetings. She's given a good debt presentation. She, I had originally recommended 17 and a half percent. Talking to Suzanne, she really strongly felt that we should up that to 20% given the volatility of our TOT revenue. In a down year, as you all know, when we saw during COVID-19, the TOT revenue could shrink. And if we didn't have excess fund balance, then we would potentially have to dip into the minimum. The minimum of 20% gives us approximately $31 to $32 million of reserve. Wanted to also add that the city's external audit team, the Poon Group, they also reviewed the policy and made some suggestion for changes. And again, 20% was settled on because of the city's volatile tax revenue. The policy, in addition to establishing a minimum reserve, the policy does a couple of things. It guides council on what to do to get back to the 20%. So if we fell below that, we have five years to replenish. We could do a few things to do that. Use the future general fund surpluses. We could make transfers from our internal service funds, removal of an, removal of an assigned fund balance, so that's a similar, like the CalPERS set aside. If we fell below the 20%, council would have the option to take from that bucket of funds to get us back up to 20%. And in addition, the city council could remove a committed fund balance, just like we talked about with the TOT set aside to affordable housing. That's an example of a committed fund balance. We could use that to get back up to our 20%. And in addition to that, if we go over the 20% and we have excess minimum fund balance, the policy guides council to do a few, that they can do a few things. We can use it for debt reduction, capital improvements, or we can use it for set asides like we did in fiscal year '23, set aside for some council priorities. I want to mention on that, that we don't have to use the excess fund balance. It's only an option for council to do. You can leave it or you can use it. It's up to council. Also, wanted to go back to one other thing about setting, about the policy itself and the GFOA, what they recommend. They recommend that a reserve, a general fund reserve should be equal to or greater than a two months of operating expenses. And for two months of operating expenses for the city is around 28 to 30 million dollars. So by setting it at 20%, we do have the two months of operating expenses as recommended by the, that's a best practice recommended by GFOA. And, and that's what we have done to, to set the policy. And with that, I will conclude that presentation and ask, council has any questions?
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions or comments? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. Chris, thank you for bringing forward a policy. I think it's something that we very definitely need, and I appreciate the work that, that went into it. I'm very concerned about the volatility of sales tax and TOT and the need to make sure that we have adequate reserves for the kind of downturns that we can experience, which we have experienced. When 2020 hit and COVID came, we went to a full stop when it came to both TOT and sales tax. We had a remarkable recovery. I don't remember anyone predicting that folks would stay home, pick up their phones and start ordering from Amazon like there was no tomorrow. But that is what happened, and in many respects, that saved us during that year. But what, what other kinds of cities have you encountered where there is the degree of volatility that we have here?
Councilmember, I don't know that I can truly answer that, you know, with, with facts. You know, I think any city that has a tourism industry like we do and is reliant on it, I mean, our TOT tax is 25% of our overall general fund revenue. It's the single largest line. And other cities who fall into that category are going to have a situation like ours where they're going to be susceptible to a hard recession. And then they, like we, would want to make sure that we've got plenty of reserves.
The other side to the ledger is, while we do have some really hard years, we also have some extremely positive years where our market is just tremendously popular. And it strikes me that those are exactly the kinds of times in which you should be salting away more money. And I'm very concerned that a 20% limit would not give us the flexibility that we need during those years when income is coming in at, at levels that exceed what we, we dreamed of. So for a comment, I am comfortable with a policy that would be not less than 20% and would provide that we would come closer to six months of TOT and sales tax as our goal for our reserves.
Thank you. Did you have a question, Councilmember Holstich?
Sorry, how much would that be?
That's probably, rough math, about $40 million. So you're looking at probably another 10 million, which would be around another 5% to 7% added on to the 20.
So the 20% is about how much?
About 31 to 32 million. And every 5% gets you somewhere around 8 million. So 5% to 7% would get you into that 40, $40 million range. And if you combine TOT tax, which is 50, with sales tax, which I believe is around 31 or 2, again, so you take half of that, you're looking at 40 to 41.
As our budget stands now, but if we do percentages like that, it changes, it varies based on
Correct.
How much our TOT increases or falls over the lot next years.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's, that's a good point to note. That is, you know, you know, as we do it, the 20% I've recommended is based off of operating expenditures. And we, we do that because it is a less volatile line than, than revenue. And so it's a more steady type of fund balance. However, we could do that. There are some cities who do do that. The GFOA does recommend to not have it, have such a volatile, have the percentage based on such a volatile line, but it's something that we certainly could do.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. This is great. I appreciate this. Couple of questions. Do you have any idea what other cities in the Valley, what they're, what they do?
Not really, but I can tell you generally that, that as a, so it varies. But generally, as a practice, most cities will use the guidelines of, of the 15 to 20% range, the two months of expenses. Some cities will, I did look at one recently in the Valley, I can't remember which one it was, but they were at 25%. Some of the cities that I worked at prior were as much as 50%. So it does vary. The 50% is a little unusual. Most cities would do, most cities would do around what the GFOA recommends at 15 to 20%.
Okay. And just for clarification, so if we set our fund balance at 20% and, and we have, next, you know, a couple of years, we want to have a budget where we dip below it, that's just regular three city council members vote on a new budget that dips below that, that would dip into that? Is that right? It's not, there's no, is that permanently, that, that's, it's sort of, we could dip into it if we just add to?
So the policy recommends that if we do dip below that, we have five years to replenish it. So under the steps that we would take to replenish it. So I, I, I don't think that allows us to budget to dip into that 20% only if we had some sort of economic uncertainty, but I'd probably have to check into that a little bit. I, I haven't dealt with that in the past.
Okay. But in a case like when we had COVID, we could have, if that would have been a case.
True. So that, so in that particular case, if, if in actual, in our actual numbers, we did have to dip into that 20%, then yes, we could. We just have to have that five-year replenishment period.
Okay. Thank you. So, and I, I just want to raise a point that we brought up earlier, but this is, you know, the volatility with sales tax and, and TOT, which Councilmember Middleton raised, and then Councilmember Holstich and I have discussed having other industries and tech industries. It's another reason why we need to diversify our, our income. And, and I agree with Councilmember Middleton that we, no one quite expected that we would do so well with COVID. I mean, there was, we were in a panic situation and we thought, you know, that, that could be it. And besides people ordering on Amazon, which, you know, they could have bought local, but they did buy local. They did buy a lot local, but they also came and stayed here. And, you know, and, and it didn't take long for our vacation rentals and, and hotels to start doing a lot better. And, and quite honestly, the community really supported our local businesses. But what I would suggest is that maybe we have a 5% catastrophic reserve that really would take an extraordinary action of council to go below that, plus a 20% fund balance reserve. Now, if we did that, we still have excess funds right now, right?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes. The way that would work is your first 5% would be your catastrophic category, and that would be, you know, a disaster would have, it would take a disaster to dip into that, like a major earthquake or something like that, that would require us to dip into that. And we could either, the policy doesn't, we probably have to direct the policy, whether that's a city council direction, or whether they give the authority to the city manager to make that declaration of a disaster.
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, during COVID, it was the city manager that declared the emergency. So, so basically, that would be, that 5% is there unless the city manager declares an emergency.
Correct.
But then we could have the 20% above that, which, you know, if we went down, we have five years to pay back.
Yeah. So the 20% would be that if there's economic downturns, like a recession, where we had to dip into that, we could, but we would have that five-year replenishment period.
Yeah. So I, I think this sort of gets, you know, to the, to the being cautious that Councilmember Middleton was saying, that we are in a good system right now, but we, we have economic uncertainty. We don't know quite what's going to happen. We still have excess funds, so it's not like we can't do special projects or repay debt if we have to. And we also, as I understand, how much of our debt is going to disappear over the next 10 years?
Yeah, over the next 10, it's going to be 100 million. So we pay off 50 million in five years, 50 million in the next five years. So 100 million of debt comes off the books in 10 years.
So we, we then potentially have others, whether we do a bond measure, other sources of funds, although we still have this excess fund balance we could do for special projects.
That's correct.
Okay. So that would be, my recommendation would be to have 5% catastrophic reserve, plus the 20% fund balance reserve, and go from there.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. I'm laughing because we fought about this pretty in depth. A few years ago, the last few budget cycles, really having a conversation with the last two city managers of what is the appropriate reserve, and what is the appropriate amount, and whether or not to have a policy. I think David Reddy preferred not to have a policy because it did constrain budgeting and staff in certain ways. And he had already gotten through the Great Recession, although we had to lay off a lot of staff in that time, and it took us a lot of long time to build up. And then, and then COVID. And so, you know, it's a conversation, I think, about flexibility and protection and risk, you know, management. So I'm glad that we are passing a policy. I very much want to follow best practices. I think we were having a conversation about 15%, 17.5%, 20% or more. And so I had been working with city staff to try to pull the minutes, because I just really want to make sure we're following what council's decided before. But I support this policy. I support it at 20%. I think it's a balance of also deploying money into the community, and also investing money into our economy that then pays dividends upon investment. And so I don't want to be Indian Wells and sitting on a lot of money that isn't being deployed to our community, because our community is so different than Indian Wells. We're an aging community. We have so many needs. We have so much aging infrastructure. We have true economic development to do. We have to invest in our people and parks and rec and all our needs. So I don't like a strict policy that's over 20% that would constrain us during those times. We've been lucky to have good economic times, but, you know, we might have bad economic times where this will limit, I mean, so this will limit, I think, what we're able to do in some ways, right? Because we'll have to keep those reserves, unless council takes an action to waive it, but then we have to work back to replenish it back.
Correct. Yeah. If we had an economic downturn where we needed to dip into this 20%, it's certainly allowable. It's just that we have to abide by the policy and work for five years to get it back up to that 20%.
Yeah. And I think that's fine. So I support the policy. I support the 20% that's recommended. You and I had a conversation about the staff report, saying staff had intended to use 17.5%, which would cover two months of expenses, because that is typically, you said that the standard, industry standard is between 15 and 20, and that you picked in the middle. Go ahead and...
Yeah, correct. That used to be some language within the GFOA best practice, and they've removed that now, and just said, overall, we recommend two months of operating expenses.
Right. So I support that policy as presented. I wouldn't support additional beyond that.
Mayor Protam?
Chris, just to clarify, if, if we did do the 25%, what is our excess fund balance?
It's, I'll give general, and we can talk about it when I get to the budget in more specifics, but the 5% would be around another $8 million of additional reserve. So you're going from about 31 to 32 to somewhere around $40 million of reserve. So right now, it looks like, I mean, you know, we've got some variables with the passing of the Navigation Center funding and the TOT, so that's going to take what I originally had thought, but it's going to be somewhere probably around 50 to 55 million of excess fund balance.
On top of that?
On top of the 40 million.
Okay. So it's, we still have those funds to, to use. It's not like we, we have any near-term restrictions.
Well, that's the policy, is that we're holding them in reserve per this policy.
But we have, in addition to that 40 million, we actually have another 50 to 55 million in excess fund balance.
That's correct. Yeah.
That is like our, from surplus, surpluses.
Right.
So that money is still available for when we have difficult times or whatever. I mean, we're not really dipping into that too much.
So we have, yeah, I mean, before some of the stuff was passed earlier tonight, you know, we had around a $95 million total unassigned fund balance. And so if we elect to do 20%, we take 32. If we elect to do 25%, we take 40. That's our minimum. And then anything between the 40 and the 95, which is the 55 million, I'm being general, would be excess fund balance, and the council can choose to do those few things that we recommended in our policy.
Right.
If I could just chime in, one other factor that we're going to be coming back to you with at the end of the year is, obviously, we all know we have a very substantial unfunded pension liability. All cities are struggling with that. We're trying to make sure that we don't get underwater, so we can, we're not paying all of our debt service, and we don't have any money for parks and recreation and safety. So one of the things we intend on doing is bringing to you at the end of the year unfunded pension liability for, for working that, that piece of it down, to put us in a little better position. And a lot of that, those funds that we're talking about, could be, you may want to have that available for your discussion later on in the year as well.
Okay.
Correct.
And I just have one more question. Does the difference between 20 and 20 plus the catastrophic make any difference when you go out for the bonds?
I'm sorry, Mayor Protam?
Whether we have 20% or 20% plus 5% catastrophic, option A or B, does that, does option A or B make any difference if we, when we go out to the bond market?
It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
It's more of having the policy in place than it is, you know. But I would say that they do consider the strength of your balance sheet. So if we have good reserves even above our excess, or even above our minimum, you know, that's going to act favorably.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Middleton?
Chris, what's our OPEB liability?
It's, it's over 100 million. I want to say it's somewhere in the vicinity of 120. The UAL for our CalPERS pension is right around 190. I think it's going to come down a little bit, but still pretty large balances. That is the one single measure that keeps our S and P rating probably from going to an AA+. Right now, we're at AA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on this item? I support 20% as recommended. Do we have a second on that? Oh, okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Middleton, and we have a second by Mayor Protam. Do we have any further comments? No. Do we need to do it again, or can I just log? Okay. City clerk, can I just log my vote instead? Okay, so motion passes 3 to 2 on the minimum fund balance. At this time, we are moving to item 2A, which is a public hearing. This is a public hearing for a resolution confirming the report of the Palm Springs Small Hotel Tourism Business Improvement District Advisory Board, leaving the fiscal year 2023 to '24 assessment and conduct, and conduct protest proceedings. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that the council has been doing every year for, since 2016. Small Hotel Tourism Business Improvement District, or known as TBID, was formed in November of 16. TBID is a special benefit assessment district that was established by council for the specific purpose of funding activities that promote tourism. The levy requested is 1%. It is the same as prior years, so there will be no change if council does approve this. And it's approved by city council annually. There's approximately 81 small hotels that assess the 1% levy, and a small hotel is defined as 49 rooms or less. The city does collect a tax, but we're basically a pass-through. When we collect it, every month, we remit it back to the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism, and they manage the funds. The estimated collections for '23, '24, or fiscal year '24 are estimated to be about $770,000. That's off of a budget that was prepared by the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism. And the collections for fiscal year '23 will be around the same. It's going to be about $800,000. The city does collect an administration fee of $3,750 per month. That's about $45,000 per year, and that allows us to process all the monthly returns and various required reporting. With that, two questions.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. So do we have questions from council at this time? Mayor Protam?
So Christine, tell me just how this operates. When this was established, the small hotels elected to do this?
I believe council formed the district back in 2016. And when they formed the district, I believe they set the parameters for the TBID at 1%. And so I believe that we are required to come back to council annually to have them reapprove it. The only way that if council, the only way that, we wouldn't bring it back to you if there was protest from a majority of the small hotels that pay into the program.
Okay. And are all the small hotels have to do it?
Yes.
No choice? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. There's more questions?
Thank you. So at this time, seeing no other further questions, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. Do we have any public comment? No. No?
I don't have any, no public comment.
No public comment. All right. The public hearing is now closed. Do we have any discussion or other questions from the council? Mayor Protam?
I just, you know, I like this model. I like the model that the businesses pay into this, and then they get to choose what happens with the money. And I think a lot of cities have business improvement districts in general for their other businesses. And I think that may be something we want to look at in the future as part of economic development. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion and a second? Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you, council. The next item is our final item, item 2B, a public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 2023, '24, and fiscal year '24, '25 comprehensive budgets, Palm Springs Community Redevelopment Successor Agency budget, updated status of adopted five-year capital improvement program, appropriations limit, and allocated positions and compensation plan. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We've just, I want to remind the public that we've had, we had our study session on the original presentation of the budget on May 8. And then, of course, we had our joint budget meeting with the Measure J Commission on June 5, followed by another presentation of the budget by our finance director. We're not going to go through that whole entire presentation again. The documents have been posted on our website, but we do want to, we are going to go through an abbreviated version of that, and, which is going to include our general fund budget, the airport budget, our capital budget, and other comments that our finance director is going to make. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mooney.
Thank you, Scott. This will be a little bit different than, than what we've kind of presented in the past, in that I'm going to go ahead and run through everything, rather than bring the city engineer up and our airport team up to run through theirs. I'm going to hit the high levels of the numbers. They really haven't changed a whole heck of a lot. They're right in the same sort of vicinity that they were in. And so with that, if I could get the team to put up PowerPoint presentation number two, that would be great. Evelyn, thank you for handling that, handing that handout out. I'll explain that, what that is in just a minute. Okay. It's a little bit smaller than I liked, but we'll go ahead and run through it. We're going to focus on the second column, which is fiscal year '23, '24. And we're going to hit the numbers high. I'm going to speak to the changes since the last iteration of the budget on June the 5, and then we'll continue on that path all the way through the capital program and through the airport budget. So we're still looking at $197.5 million in revenue. Changes in revenue since the last iteration is really just a timing difference. We had a funding commitment to Allo Palm Canyon. We used some of the HAP grant funds of 2 million. We pulled that back into '23, and we just made that funding commitment happen just a few weeks ago. So that's the change in revenue. On the expense side, we're showing $210 million, $210.3 million. And the changes in the expense, again, we used $3 million of our affordable housing set aside, plus the $2 million in HEP funds for the $5 million funding commitment to Allo Palm Canyon. In addition to that change, we found some adjustments, found some duplicate expenses in our Plaza Theater budget over '24 and '25. There was some significant decreases in expense there. It's about $625,000 in fiscal year '24. And then we did a reconciliation of what we had as far as salary and benefits in our budget compared to HR's final allocated positions reconciliation, and we found about $600,000 in savings there as well for fiscal year '24. Looks like we're going to end fiscal, we're projecting to end fiscal year '24 with $12.8 million deficit, which we will be using the excess fund balance to fund. And that does not include any of the changes or approvals of funding that we did this evening. That's what I have in the handout, which I will go over later. For fiscal year '25, $191.8 million in revenue. Total expense in fiscal year '25, $183.5 million in expense. And then we're looking at right now, before anything that was passed this evening, a surplus of $8.4 million. Some changes, we found $1 million in Plaza Theater budget that we had duplicated, so we took that out. And in addition, again, with the reconciliation between our budget and the allocated positions from human resources, we found about $621,000. But we're sitting at right now a surplus of about 8.4 for the general fund. This is our fund balance tab, and I'm actually going to go to this one. This is the handout that was just given to you. This, this does incorporate, and I guessed right, the changes that happened tonight. So I'm going to go through this a little bit more extensively. So I'm going to go through this a little bit more extensively. So we're going to start with the fiscal year 2324. It's the fourth column, it's in the blue. And we're going to look at the beginning fund balance, which is 106.4 million for beginning fund balance. We have operating revenues of 178 million, and we have grant revenue of just over 19 million for total revenue. And this hasn't changed from a prior version of 197.5 million. We're looking at operating expenditures of 162.6. So this does include the funding of $5 million for the Navigation Center approved by council tonight. It does include the $3 million of set aside that was, that was approved by council tonight. So I guessed correctly, so that was good.
I thought it was live, and it was much more impressive.
We have the set asides of 16.8 million. We got grant expense of 19. So we're looking at total expenditures, if you kind of walk yourself down, of about 218.3 million. We're going to use fund balance to fund some of that negative 20.8 number. So as you can see, when we go down to the fund balance, there's the 20%. It says proposed minimum, it is now the required minimum. That gives us about 32 and a half million. That is the minimum fund balance that the council just approved. We have remaining unassigned, or what we are calling in our fund balance policy, the excess unassigned, and that's about $53 million. For a total unassigned fund balance of 85 million. There's the Calpers set aside. We've been setting aside $6 million a year to fund that, that's 40 million. And then there's the TOT to affordable housing set aside. You can see in the column, the green column before that, that we begin in this fiscal year 23 to set aside $3 million. And it jumps up by $3 million each year, $6 million in '24, and you can see what it does in '25. So that's fiscal year '24. If we jump over to fiscal year '25, we begin the year with $85 million in fund balance. We have 186 million in operating revenue, 5.7 million in grant revenue. Four million of that is for operations of the Navigation Center. We have 191.8 million in total revenue. Go down to operating expenditures, 161 million. The transfers out, again, transfers out are transfers to other funds. So it would be transfers to our debt service fund, transfers to our internal service funds, stuff like that, what we call transfers out. That's about 18.7 million. We're looking at an operating surplus of 5.3. So that does include the $3 million set aside for TOT. So the surplus in '25 went from 8.3, which I showed earlier, to now 5.3 with the inclusion of the $3 million TOT set aside. We have operating expenditures of 180 million, and we have grant expense of 5.7. So we have total expenses, I believe that's 186 million. For a surplus of 5.3. So again, the require, or the required minimum fund balance is now 32.4 million. And with the addition of the $5 million surplus, we're looking at an excess unassigned fund balance of about $58 million for the end of fiscal year '25. The Calpers set aside goes up to 46.3. And the TOT set aside for affordable housing goes up to 9 million. With that, I will conclude the general fund presentation. I'll go ahead and move on to the capital fund. So on the capital fund, most, not most, all of the changes in the capital fund since the last iteration on June the 5th was all due to the Measure J and community initiated projects mostly that council approved at our joint session with Measure J. So we are starting out with a beginning fund balance in '24, 79 million. Revenue of 72 million. We have transfers in of 2 million, that's coming from the general fund. We fund the capital budget from the general fund to the tune of $2 million a year. $89 million of expenditures, $3 million of a transfer out. And then we end fiscal year '24, 61 million. The changes that occurred in fiscal year '24, we increased the community initiated projects in Measure J from 1 million to 2 million. We also increased the projects support for the Parks and Rec. If there was any overages in the Parks and Rec programs in Measure J, we added $250,000 to that. And then also, we included $100,000 in fiscal year '24 for promotion of the completed projects that happened in Measure J. Fiscal year '25, just really quick, we start out with 61 million in fund balance, 55 million in revenue. Again, a $2 million transfer in, 55.9 million of expenditures. And we end fund balance in '25 with 59.6 million. The changes in '25 from the last iteration that we presented, we presented, $2 million increased in Measure J community projects. So we are now funding the community initiated projects in Measure J at $3 million per year annually. We also included $3 million of catch up that we did not include in the budget in a prior year at council's direction. We apologize for that. We did catch up in fiscal year '25. We added the 3 million in. So the community initiated project bucket at the end of '25 is going to be around $10 million. So a nice bucket there for the community initiated projects. Again, $250,000 was added to parks, projects, overruns. And again, $100,000 for communications and marketing of the completed projects for Measure J. That concludes the capital presentation, and we'll move on to the airport. The airport had very minor changes, a little bit of personnel expense. So for the funding, we'll start in the second column for the revenue. 62.7 million of revenue expected in '24 for the airport. Expenses at 48.8 million. That's going to generate a surplus of about 13.8 million, or 13.9 in fiscal year '24. And in fiscal year '25, revenue increases to 69.3 million. Expenses at 60.6 million, and that's going to generate a surplus of about 8.7 million. And I hope I didn't go through that too quickly. But that concludes the presentation, and we're more than happy we have the team here to answer any questions that the council may have. So would like to open it up for questions, please.
Thank you so much. So this is another public hearing, so we're going to do questions. Do we have any questions at this time? Mayor Protem.
Well, I guess my first question is, you predicted everything else, but you didn't predict the 25%, the 5% catastrophic on here. So, you know, why did you not predict that? I want to ask a question on the Quimby funds. We have 3.8 million in there. Is that right? At the end of 20, right now?
End of '24, at the end of '24, it looks like.
Actually, at the end of '23, I mean, right now.
Oh. Sorry. I got to get to that slide.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the full thing.
We'll get there in just a little bit.
It's on page 26, where we have the adopted, the fund balance for '22, '23. We have Quimby funds are at 3.8 million, 630, 23. Item two B, 26.
My 26 is not your 26.
It's page 14.
Yeah, so I do know the fund balance and I'm familiar with it because we, yeah, so yeah, it's around that $3 million.
And out of that 3.8, how much of that have we, is already allocated? Do you have any idea?
I believe, so the, so the Quimby fund is really part of the five-year CIP plan. It's a funding source for that, but it is restricted for Parks and Rec. So the two projects that I know of off the top of my head is we have about 725,000 over the next two years that are going to go toward pickleball courts. And then we have, I want to say it's five, 200 and something thousand that's going to go to Dog Park at DeMuth Park. So it's about 900,000 to a million. Joelle can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the only two projects we've got in the CIP plan for the Quimby fund right now.
That leaves about another 2.8 million in Quimby funds for parks that. Okay, well, I can make a comment on that later. I have, I'm sorry to do this because I know we were only doing the top level, but I have a couple small, more questions to the basic. Do we have any money left in our facade improvement program?
I'm going to have to defer that question. No, Jay says, no, we do not.
So that, that's all, that's all done. We did budget again.
So we did, do you know how much?
Can we just say that, Chris? Can you just repeat that? Chris, can you just repeat that on the record?
Yeah, yeah, so Jay says we did budget, we are done with the funds for fiscal year '23. We did budget it again for fiscal year '24 at 180,000.
Okay. Under the special events and contributions, we spend, we allocate about a million dollars a year, is that correct?
That's correct.
And as of this past year, we only spent 736,000?
I believe it's a little less than that. I believe it's in between 6 and 700,000.
Does that other carry over normally?
It does not. We typically, the general fund doesn't have carryovers. We only carry over capital. But we did budget another million dollars in '24 and another million dollars in '25.
Okay. Those are my, those are my questions for now, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hostage.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions. For grants and sponsorships, so a million dollars. So do you know why we only spent 600,000 or 700,000 of that? And why, you know, is it possible for us to roll that amount over? Because we do spend so little of a percentage of our budget on community, like giving that money to nonprofits. I'd love to see it carry over if we can. I'm sensitive to, we're sensitive, you know, we've had this excess surplus really, and so we're really trying to deploy it. And so I'm sensitive to some of our allocations the last cycle not being allocated. We just have, we're too much to do too quickly without enough staff. So, yeah, do you know for grants and sponsorships, that's something I'm focused on as well?
Yeah, so we wouldn't carry it over, but the council is certainly welcome to approve the budget adding $300,000 to the grants and sponsorship line if that's what council chooses to do.
Or a different amount.
Or a different amount.
Okay. And then, see if I have other question. For the arts fund, so that also has additional funds available in it as well. Do you know how much is planned? So I see 1.4 in the public arts fund?
Yeah, that's, that's the end of fiscal year '23, but I think we've got some significant art projects that are budgeted for '24 at a little over a million. We got a million, 1.4 million budgeted in expense, and a lot of that is going to be for art projects in '24. So we do end the year at about a $500,000 fund balance in '24. And in fiscal year '25, that actually increases to about 700,000.
Based on revenue that's coming in?
Based on revenue.
Projects, development projects and revenue.
It's actually a fee on new development, if I remember correctly, that it's an in lieu fee for.
Right, development projects. So these are separate funds. And so if we wanted to create a separate housing fund to truly protect that money beyond assigned, I'm not an accountant, I'm learning, before, and then signed fund, we'd have to, what would we have to do to get to that?
There's actually rules around these other funds. They're called special revenue funds, and it's established by a GASB pronouncement. And so I believe that just the resolution that we did this evening wouldn't qualify it as a special revenue fund. I believe it has to be more restricted than that through possibly an ordinance. I'd have to confirm that with our external auditors to be sure. But I, I do, I don't think that the action tonight would make it a special revenue fund.
We have a housing successor agency fund that has 11 million beginning fund balance in '22, and then 7.9, but I assume that's pretty restricted based on.
Correct, that's different.
How redevelopment happened.
Yeah, and I may have to go to Jay for this, but I believe that's revenue that, I know that that fund is for affordable housing. And I believe that revenue came from a source, I think it might be redevelopment.
It's pass-through money, basically, that we already have to commit.
It is technically the leftover redevelopment funds from the previous redevelopment agency. But I believe what you're seeing are notes receivable as part of the fund balance. So when we issue financial assistance to projects, we do it as a loan. So if we give a $3 million loan, that 3 million is still showing up in that fund balance. So I think it would be important to check the cash balance on those for what we can actually use. And I think we spent that all, so, okay.
Yeah, Jay's correct. That, that fund balance is tied up all in, in basically 55-year notes to funding commitments to affordable housing projects. And so in 55 years, when those notes come due, we write them down and the fund balance comes down.
Thank you. And then for Measure J, so explain to me exactly how, what you did with Measure J to remedy the problem that council had appropriated 3 million a year in community funds projects last year. And so we're owed for that, this past year where 3 million wasn't actually allocated. And then you, you're only getting us to 3 million by 2024, 2025.
Yeah, so what we did with there is, is the budget on Measure J was pressured in '24, so we couldn't pick it up to the $3 million that council wanted to do in '24. However, in '25, we did make that annual amount, 3 million. And then we caught up from two years ago when we, when, I think, two, or it was last year, maybe last year, that council wanted to do 3 million. So we brought that into '25 as well to catch up for what council directed us to do last year that wasn't done. So we have actually $6 million in fiscal year '25 in Measure J for community initiated projects, and 2 million in '24, because if we would have added that 1 million in '24, our fund balance would have turned negative.
I understand, so you owe, you owe us two, speaking to the public, you owe us two for Measure J, 2 million for last fiscal year, this past fiscal year that we just passed, and then two more for the following fiscal year until we get to three. So that's an additional four, but you're saying you're finding it and making us whole by 2024, 2025?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No. Mayor, Mayor Protem.
For, for Jay, the, the facade improvement, did we run out, or was a request beyond what we had?
Yes, we ran out, and we have a waiting list now.
Okay, so I'll wait, I'll have my comments later.
Do you know, sorry, may I ask, sorry, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you know how much is requested in the waiting list? Is it about the 180 that's budgeted? Is that sufficient?
We have about three or four who've applied, but the funds had run out. So we provide a matching fund of $7,500 for facade improvements. The, so if they spend $20, we'll match $20. If they spend 15,000, we'll match that with just $7,500. So three or four applications, looking for that additional match.
Thanks. All right, thank you so much. So at this time, we, I would like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. And we have one speaker, Adam Lerner.
Thank you. So I'm Adam Lerner. I am the CEO of the Palm Springs Art Museum, and it's really a pleasure to be speaking with you here tonight. I am grateful to you for considering our request to increase our support for our free Thursday night programs. And I'm grateful to you for providing us with that $50,000 a year that we've received consistently since 2008. So the free Thursday night program, where the museum is entirely free from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we increased it since I got here from 5:00 to 7:00 to 5:00 to 8:00. That is not just about making the museum more accessible to people who can't afford it. It really is a symbol of the museum's inclusiveness and openness and willingness to be inviting to all of our community. We have increased our investment in these free Thursday nights. When I first got here, it was a little bit of a sleepy program. We had about 700 people a night. Now we get on average about 1,500 people coming to, a night to this program. We have, we estimate about 60,000 people over the course of this year projected. Three times this year, we had to literally close the doors because we met fire code. Um, and therefore we didn't want to, um, do any damage there. So, um, with $60,000, um, 60,000 people coming per year, you can just do the calculation on the loss of revenue at a realized income of about $10 per person. But the hard costs of this alone are over $50,000. And when you include about another, the soft cost for staff of about $140,000 in the facilities, security, we need a lot of security for events like this, then this is a very expensive program to run, which we are happy to run. But it is also, um, like by far, we've, we, we did not increase, we did not ask for an increase, um, for, for 15 years. If we'd asked for just 10%, we would be at $208,000 right now. I feel like this is a big part of our, um, rejiggering, uh, the museum to become a more democratic, inclusive museum for our entire community.
Thank you. All right, and seeing no further public comment, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, do we have discussion? Uh, Councilmember DeHart.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chris, excellent work on catching all the notes from our last meeting and, uh, including them, uh, in this version of the budget, so thank you. Um, I appreciate that. The one thing that I, um, thought I had talked about, but, uh, we didn't put a real ask to it, is on the community enhancement, or what council knows as the discretionary line item. Uh, I, I think, um, I, I would like to make a recommendation that we increase, uh, that by $5,000, um, per district, in, uh, in the upcoming budget, so that there's, um, a, a more, um, amount that may be more, um, not proper, but, uh, a more, uh, uh, um, impactful amount, thank you. Uh, so that's the only recommendation that I've got, and, uh, I hope, um, Councilmember Hostage will, uh, ask for an increase in the grants and sponsorship, uh, so I will leave that for you. But thank you for catching all the notes on the last, uh, the last go-around.
Uh, Councilmember Hostage, do you want to go next? No?
Sure. Excuse me, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that the, that staff had sent me about the grants and sponsorships, um, last cycle. So very much would like to, um, increase the amount of grants and sponsorships. I see you have a number there on your paper. I see. Oh, not 3 million. Okay, so I was like, oh, he has $3 million on his paper, so I'll ask for that. I do want to talk a little bit about the grants and sponsorship program. I had talked to staff about this. So we've gone in different directions, but I do think it's an important role of our, of our council and part of our budget. So initially, we had had it be very council-directed, and we had a subcommittee, and then we decided here on council. Um, and then now we've moved to like a staff-directed process where last, last year, staff decided, and we just allocated the money. We had talked about in the past, there are some key public institutions in our city that we might want to take out from the grants and sponsorships, like the, um, competitive process for small nonprofits, and maybe just add them as line items in our budget. Um, we had talked, and we don't have to do that today, but just to flag for council for next years, because, you know, we funded, um, the Palm Springs Cultural Center, the Boys and Girls Club, MIZEL, LGBTQ Center, Jewish Family Services, um, the art museum is not in here, but it's separate funds, right? And so there's just this, like, key institutions, and so it's interesting making it a competitive process instead of just like if you're, you know, this, they're doing public services for us, providing public services that would cost us a lot more to provide. So we had talked about just doing line items for some of those institutions as opposed to taking big chunks, because, you know, this was last year, $100,000 for the Boys and Girls Club, um, 100,000 for MIZEL, you know, you get really close to a million, um, and that takes away from small and not, upcoming nonprofits or other people who might need the funds. So I would absolutely support an increase, um, whatever amount, what amount for grants and sponsorships of increase for the total allocation can we afford? Everyone laughed at 3 million, so I'm guessing that's wrong.
The, the difference this year was about 3, $300,000. So, um, you know, as you know and saw in the presentation, we're pressured in 24. We have a surplus in 25. We, I don't know if that I can make a recommendation. Uh, I'd rather council do that.
So 1.3 would be safe, because that's the easy rollover money.
Correct.
And then more would probably be possible, considering we're sitting on a lot of surplus.
True.
Um, so that's one thing, so I'd love to talk about that with council. I would love to, we also got a few other requests, so the art museum requested, they're not in our line item budget. It looks like there is also, so there's money in grants and sponsorships potentially for them that we could allocate. There's also, um, money in the arts fund. It sounds like there's half a million dollars that's remaining in the arts fund, though that fund does take away from art projects in the community. So, um, maybe we can find some money for their request. I would love to see that. Um, the organization Do the Right Thing also requested, I think $30,000. They've been working with the police department and with local high school, with students. So I'd love to see if that's something that we could fit in, in the budget. I'm hoping Mayor Protem is asking about Quimby funds to fund our amphitheater, uh, or other park improvements that we need so desperately. Um, I would support that. And I think that we're also going to talk about economic development work that, um, we could support as well. But, um, those are my main, um, my main comments. Really excellent job. I know it's not easy. I know we have to staff turnover, and you're really piecing some of this stuff together, and I think you've done a really fantastic job. So thank you to all our department heads and all our, uh, leadership staff who are here tonight. We really appreciate, um, the strength of our team, because this isn't easy, and, and it's excellent work.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton, did you want to go?
You know, I, I find myself, when we get to this last session, wanting to make as few changes as absolutely possible. But, uh, specifically to the art museum, uh, what we have seen, and I'm very pleased that Adam is here this evening, uh, his leadership has been absolutely remarkable. Uh, and we have seen a sea change in terms of the cooperation and involvement of the art museum with the broader Palm Springs community, and I want to reward, uh, that good work. Uh, so, uh, between the Public Arts, uh, Commission and other places, I would like to find, uh, the $300,000 that's been requested.
Thank you very much. I always love when the funds are coming from Councilmember Middleton. I'm like, home run, we're gonna do it. Go art museum.
I take that as a compliment.
It's absolutely a compliment. Uh, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, everybody let in, so that's great. So yes, I, we have $3 million in Quimby funds. Uh, we are still waiting to have our parks master plan. We have 750,000 for Measure J set aside for the amphitheater. We have pickleball. I would like to ask that we make this a priority, to have our parks' master plan done as soon as possible and take into account all of these different issues that we have, include, we have the Quimby funds to really build up the downtown, the amphitheater, to make sure, I know we've had some discussions, um, actually, we had, I shouldn't say that, so, um, and to look at the pickleball, to the dog parks, to make sure the playgrounds, all of these different things that were happening. I still am questioning whether we have enough money in maintenance and parks. I know from '24 to '25, the parks only goes up like 500,000, and the maintenance doesn't go up a lot. And we have maintenance, you know, it's a lot to do. Um, so I would really want to, um, push that as well. I agree, I, I think one of the things, I, I absolutely agree with everyone about the art museum. I think it has been, um, it's terrific, and, and we're talking about the free Thursday nights, and maybe what we want to do is also tie, because they do the second, second Sundays, I think it is? Third Sundays, which is a great community, uh, event as well. Um, and, uh, and there's a lot of these community events, but the other thing is that, um, since Adam has, Adam Lerner's been here, it's also been very much involved in the hospitality community, and this is, although it's a community museum, it is also a tourist role. And, um, and I think, um, having a business downtown, I will tell you, it has been many years before people actually knew there was an art museum there, and now visitors are seeing it, which is great. And it's, and it's really a world-class art museum. So one thing, the, one question I have is the current money for Thursday nights, that comes out of public arts?
Yes, the 50,000 is funded by the public arts fund.
Okay, so I would like to see it. I would like to make sure that we, you know, I wouldn't necessarily want to take the other 300,000 out of public arts fund without discussing, but maybe they want to put in some of it. But I would ask that that go to the Public Arts Commission if they want to increase that, or if they want to put some of that 300,000 into ensuring we have the second Sundays, second Sundays, third Sundays, sorry. That, that I would want to have their input. Um, I also want to mention in terms of this grants and sponsorships, there are other places where money comes from. So like for Measure J, they did give money, 500,000 for the MIZEL kitchen, and, and some money for Boys and Club, Girls Club. They are more, they're not just program expenses, but if they didn't get that from Measure J, then, you know, it's, it's, they, they would have to find it from somewhere else. So there are other places that we can look, and we should make sure that we're considering it. The, the eventual $10 million in Measure J, uh, community initiated projects, I think, right now, we're at a point where engineering and staff can't handle a whole lot more community projects, and, and we saw that even this year. So if we know we have that money in '25, it might make sense then for Measure J to start, um, soliciting community projects that could be done at that point, and being able to involve engineering and what actually makes sense. Because I know last time, they came up with all these projects that hadn't really been fully vetted, so, uh, the cost vetted. So I wanted to add that. Um, I also wanted to raise, and I'm not, I hope I can do this now, but in the economic development, um, we've talked a lot about, about that. Earlier tonight, we talked about a tech task force. Uh, previously, we just talked about a potential business improvement district. The facade improvement program came up, where we've run out of money. I personally would like to see a dumpster improvement program, because that would be another subject. But can I ask that we reinstate the Business Retention and Economic Development Subcommittee that Councilmembers Hostage and Kors ran so well in the past?
I think if the council wants to add that to the motion and vote on it as part of the budget, you can do that, yes.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to add that, um, to my suggestion that we reinstate that committee that could handle a lot of these four or five issues that came up tonight and other ones as well. I think that may have been all I, all I had for that, um, but thank you for all this work, Chris, and having a two-year budget is really, is really terrific. Um, now you just got to make sure you make the money. But thank you very much. It's really great. And thank you to everyone who did it, because I know this is a lot of work.
Thank you. Well, uh, Councilmember DeHart?
Yeah, fully support, uh, the $300,000 for the museum, but I, I would be opposed to taking it from the Public Arts Commission. I think we, we need to let that, those monies sit with them. They've got a lot of projects. So this $300,000, we've got to pull from, uh, another source, um, and not take away from the Public Arts Commission. But I fully support that, that amount, and $300,000 added into, uh, the grants and sponsorship for '24, uh, sounds good, too.
All right, Councilmember Middleton.
Yeah, I think we're getting close to, uh, coming to a motion, so I just want to make a, a comment, uh, much more broadly. Uh, I'm going back and looking at, uh, the last year before COVID hit, which was fiscal year 2018 and 2019. And in that year, we had, uh, revenues of just under $144 million. And we are now looking at revenue over the next two years that is going to be $199, $191 million. That's an absolutely remarkable, uh, change in growth in our city. That comes from, uh, a $15 million increase in TOT, a $12 million increase in our sales tax. Uh, we've got cities in the Coachella Valley that, uh, our rate of growth, uh, is right on par with, uh, what they have generally. Uh, but the other number that just jumped out at me is, uh, property taxes are usually pretty level. And we've gone from 24 to 31, 31, almost 32 million dollars in property taxes, uh, over the course of just a little over five years. Uh, so, uh, I want to, in passing this budget, uh, give a shout-out and a thank you to our business community, to our, uh, visitors who come to Palm Springs, to, uh, our residents who have invested in this city. Uh, we're passing a budget that, uh, we would not have contemplated a few years ago. And while we step, while we do the important detail work, uh, we really need, need to step back and say thank you.
Thank you for that, I agree. All right, so what I have heard, that I have heard support for, I think, is a 5K additional for each district for a total of $25,000 additional funding for discretionary fund, $300,000 to the art museum, an increase of grants and sponsorships by $300,000, making it 1.3, and then a request to reinstate the Business Retention Subcommittee. Yes, and to prioritize the Parks Master Plan. Is there any changes or additions that people want to recommend? Councilmember Hostage?
Sorry, I'll get asked about this. Um, Do the Right Thing had requested funding for the city, for the work they're doing with the police department. The police department didn't include that in their budget. Um, we can add it here, or we could direct them to the grants and sponsorship program. It's up to sta, um, city council.
Would that money come from the police budget, or would that be coming from our general fund?
General fund, grants and sponsorships.
Yeah, so I don't know how council feels.
Or one time.
One time, so, eh, in general, to me, this request would have come through grants and sponsorships, since it's a one-time request.
Can I?
I'd be curious how the other rest of council feels. Mayor Protem?
Staff is going to determine the grants and sponsorship money in the next couple months, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Protem, my understanding is, yeah, the process is, we will, after the budget's approved in July, we'll start the application process. I understand we notify, uh, the agencies that the application is open to, uh, to make their requests, and then we would diligently go about trying to, uh, make those allocations. But I might defer to, um, our Assistant City Manager for, uh, explaining that a little better.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Councilmembers. The City Manager is correct that after the budget is approved, we will start the process for an application period, and then, um, staff takes your recommendations and guidance, uh, on things that have been priorities for the city council, things that have been funded in the past. Um, that's how we've done it the last several years, making sure they impact Palm Springs residents, um, and assess the applications.
Okay, thank you. So, first of all, I do want to mention that my company donates some of the t-shirts, most of the t-shirts to Do Right Thing, so, um, um, are a sponsor, not a vendor. But I would support that we have the 35,000 out of the grants and sponsorships. Thirty, is it 30 or 35? They asked. Councilmember Hostage?
I think it's 35.
I think it's 35, yeah. I would recommend that they're a new organization that hasn't, that's. that hasn't, that started last, this past year, but didn't get in time for last year's grants and sponsorship. And I agree with everything else that the motion passed. If I can make that friendly amendment for the.
All right. Then Mayor, sorry, Councilmember DeHart?
I think if we're going to direct the Special Events and Sponsorship Committee, then we're not having a hands-off from the discretion that they have. But I understand we do have a special projects fund, that there is some money there. So, why, I would suggest we pull that 35 from the special projects fund. And that's separate and apart from what's happening with grants and sponsorships.
We can do that, yeah. Would that be the same for the 300,000? We've got 50,000 in the Public Arts Commission going for art museum right now. So, the 250,000 in addition to that, would you recommend that come from the special projects fund as well?
I don't think you, I don't think there was enough, that much money there, is there?
In the special projects fund?
Yeah, I thought it was 160, 163, or is it?
I think we've got $2.9 million in there.
Oh.
It can sustain it.
Then by all means, let's take it from there.
And in general, though, for the arts museum, you know, this is, back in 2008, it was a request by the city council at the time to have free Thursday nights. And so, it would be nice to just see this worked into our regular budget, which is why I see that, that asked differently than I see Do the Right Thing, for instance, which to me is more of a grants and sponsorships type thing. But if council wants to move forward with this one-time request, that's fine. But I do want to just point, put that out there because I do know that we end up hearing from other groups and people asking us about why we're funding this project and not others in this special way. So, just, as, this is an exception, not the rule.
Yeah, I agree. And that's really because they started last year and we have the extra, extra money from last year.
Right.
So.
All right, so I'm just going to repeat this again so that we're all on the same page. What I have is $25,000 total to discretionary fund, $300,000 to the art museum from the special projects fund, 1.3 million for grants and sponsorships, a $35,000 for Do the Right Thing from the special projects fund, reinstate our Business Retention Subcommittee, and a request to prioritize the Parks Master Plan. Do we have, we have a motion and a second for that?
Mayor, on the Subcommittee, do you wish to appoint the members tonight? Or do you want to have that come back at a subsequent meeting?
I would love to appoint Councilmember Holstich and Mayor Protem Jeffrey Bernstein if they'll accept. Fantastic. I also do want to say that this, this budget is based on what I just stated as well as we're approving it with the prior changes from items three A, B, and C. So, that is what's on the table, and we can all vote. You can just voice vote.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, congratulations, congratulations, council, staff, the public. You have a budget. Yay. All right, thank you all so much. And we are only one minute off from my predicted time for when we would get to public comment. All right. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. While we value your comments, we cannot take action on any items at this time. We have one speaker, Mark Patrick Reese. Is he still here? I believe that he left. So, with that, we do not have any further public comment. And we will move on to city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development. I'll turn it over to Scott Stiles, our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to also conclude by great thanks to our Acting Finance Director, Chris Mooney, and our Budget Manager, Andrew Neary, for all of their work. I have to say, it was, and I think I said this before, the second week I was here, I charged them with adjusting and pivoting to a two-year budget. And they performed admirably as well. I see all of our department directors didn't want to stay around too much longer. But I was going to thank them for all of their work, too, in adjusting on very short notice. And it's, I think it's going to prove very positive for all of us to approve this two-year budget this evening. I think we'll appreciate it next year in the middle of a lot of stuff that's going on. I also wanted to mention very, just very briefly, we have, I'm sure maybe some of you are going to talk about it, too, but as we celebrate our nation's independence next week, we have a whole series of activities that are going on. And the community should visit our website and to find out everything going on. Maybe those of you might want to mention some of this stuff. And then I'll talk about this some more later on next month. But I've been asked to remind, start talking to the community about the fact that we're going to do our first blood drive. We're going to host it at the end of next month. It's going to be a nine-cities challenge. We're going to host it at the Palm Springs Police Training Center on Wednesday, July 26th. And we'll talk about it more and get, try and get as much involvement as we can in that blood drive. We haven't done one in a while, so this will be, it'll be a great event for us. So, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Oh, and, yes, I'm sorry. Looking at our tentative upcoming meeting schedule, you will see, of course, the city council goes on recess in August, so we have more items that we'll be trying to get on on July 24th. You will see on July 10th, we really have a pretty light schedule. Part of that because the date has been moved up a little bit, too. So, we really, you know, the agenda won't be, will be pretty light. But July 24th, we'll have, we'll have a number of items. That's all I have.
Is it? Thank you. Is there any interest by council in canceling the July 10th meeting? We also have a League of, or a Cal Cities event on that same night that I know it's important to vote on the bylaws. Is council okay with that? I'm seeing nods. Okay. I think we have three from the ladies, so. All right, do we have other, if there's any objections, speak now. Use, so the, use the mic for the record.
Addressing, when would we anticipate the sidewalk vending ordinance to come back?
The sidewalk vending ordinance is different than the, what's on this.
I think we're proposing to bring that back as a, as a second reading on July 10th. So, we would bring it back instead just on July 24th. Again, it's second reading, so it's, that's usually a pretty ministerial action.
It's on consent. So, it would come back on the July 24th consent calendar.
I'm hearing a lot of community conversations, so I think it's going to be more than a consent item.
It will, it would be on the consent calendar. If the item is pooled, that would be different.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is, is street vending coming back on the 10th?
The sidewalk vending ordinance?
Yeah.
We were proposing to bring it back, yes, as a, as a second reading on, on the 10th.
And the, on the July 10th, the food delivery ordinance was going to be considered for the first time. So, two separate items.
Actually, that one is also a second reading unless the changes are proposed. Remember, recall, the council did do a first reading of the food delivery ordinance.
Okay, so they would, so the food delivery ordinance and the sidewalk vending ordinance would be coming back for second readings on consent on July 10th.
Correct. Now, if there are changes proposed to, for instance, the sidewalk vending ordinance, then that would have to be another first reading and then a subsequent second reading. So, that's really dependent on, you know, whether the council receives input and chooses to modify the sidewalk vending ordinance.
And I will say, if there is, if, I have not heard of any changes to the sidewalk vending ordinance at this time. If there are, then those would be things that we would really need to get and begin discussions about prior to the July 10th meeting. Or more reason to push it to the July 24th meeting if there's extensive changes that are needed. Mayor, or Councilmember Middleton?
If sidewalk vending is going to be back on July 10, I think we should prepare for a long meeting, even if it's just second reading.
Okay, so my hearing that we're back on for a July 10th meeting.
And I'm not, I'm not scheduled to be here on the 24th, and it's a pretty important topic.
All right, so we're back on with a July 10th meeting. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. I may not attend the July 10th meeting, so I have a conflict. So, I'm trying to make that work, but I may not attend.
Okay.
So, the council can go for it, obviously, it's a planned meeting.
All right.
Yeah, I think that's going to be one where we really want to make sure all five of us are here. Nobody wants to, to miss the opportunity to participate.
I can try to do it, I just don't know.
And if you can't, then.
Okay.
I think it's better to defer than to, than to have any of us absent.
If we, if we defer, then that item would come back in September. So, I'm a little bit confused. Are we saying that we're going to postpone the July 10th meeting and have, but have the sidewalk vending ordinance come back in September? Or are we saying we're going to do a July 10th meeting and we may need to push it if Councilmember Holstich isn't in attendance?
Can we decide on the date after we hear from Councilmember Holstich with, regarding the calendar?
Yeah, City Attorney, how soon do we need to know if we're canceling a meeting?
I believe the agenda is scheduled to go out next Wednesday, is that right? So, sometime between now and then.
Is that enough time, Councilmember Holstich? Yeah, there's also a holiday there.
I can probably attend if that's council's direction. I would be hesitant to bump anything that needs to be done until September. I think it really is a question of staff, of if you need that meeting and if we need to address that issue before September.
I think the, regarding sidewalk vending, it's, it's more of whether or not we want to address it. Once it's, once it's approved, the ordinance won't go into effect until another 30 days. If we're going to be doing basically a first reading again the second time we hear it, then it would make sense for us to hear it sooner than later. But I do, anyone who's listening about sidewalk vending, please come to us right now and tell us what these big changes are because this is the first that I'm hearing of that need. And that's a huge deal if we're going to have to do a whole second, a whole new reading of this. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can make a request, too. I've been getting requests about enforcement, so I'd love when it comes back to also get an update about what enforcement is happening for sidewalk vending. There's, I've seen, I've personally seen a number of vendors with code enforcement or city staff there. And so, I'm getting requests from the community, you know, what's happening with the enforcement under the current ordinance. So, if we could bring that back. I didn't raise it last time because it was like 11:00 PM or something. It was very late. But if we could just address that in the staff report, that'd be great.
Thank you. Do we have other comments from council? Okay, Mayor Protem?
I just want to thank Councilmember DeHart for the big gay barbecue pride event. That was really terrific. And hopefully, we'll have more regular June pride events in Palm Springs and as long as you promise that weather. But it was a really terrific event and really great community event, so thank you.
Thank you. So, I do have a couple of items that I, I want to raise. One is that I would like to see us discuss procurement and local hire as a, as a, as a policy. This has been, since I've been on council, we've discussed the issue of local hire and procurement quite a bit, and, but we haven't taken any formal action. So, if there's support from council, I'd like to see that on an upcoming agenda. I'm seeing nods of support. The other is that we continue to have issues with residents complaining about the base levels. And I know that noise ordinance generally is a fraught issue, but I would really like us to look specifically at base levels and limit our conversation to that and how we can, because I don't think we have any, we don't have any ordinance on base levels at this time. It's just, it's just the decibel levels. So, being able to address that specifically, I think, would be really helpful to residents who are experiencing actual shaking of their homes. So, if there's any support for that, I mean, I have.
I support that very strongly.
Okay, so if Councilmember Middleton and Mayor Protem. Then the other thing is just congratulations to the Coachella Valley Firebirds for an incredible season. Someone, someone mentioned to me that we don't talk about the Firebirds enough. So, I'd say I think we're all hockey fans, the entire Coachella Valley now, so we do want to give kudos to them. And with that, we are adjourning this meeting in memory of Kaiser Marcus. And, oh, sorry, Councilmember DeHart?
I did have a comment. And to City Manager, I, I'd like to make a recommendation that we have somebody from the SEP Committee serve on this sponsorship and grants decision-making process. So, the special events team over at Parks and Rec. I think they would bring something, some really valuable insight to the decision-making process there.
Councilmember Middleton, apologies.
Just a couple of quick comments. At the Sunline meeting yesterday, we appointed a new Chief Executive Officer, Mona Babuta. She will be reporting for duty in August. She comes from the Golden Gate Transit Agency, so we're very pleased to bring her in. We also elected a new chair for next year, and that's yours truly.
Oh, congratulations.
And lastly, I want to use this occasion to thank all of the folks with San Francisco Pride for giving me an opportunity to speak at the Pride Breakfast this past Sunday, and most particularly, the opportunity to stand up and defend transgender children everywhere. Thank you.
That's wonderful, thank you. Congratulations on all of that to Lisa. All right, so seeing no further comments, we will adjourn this meeting. And our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, July 10th. And we are adjourning in memory of Kaiser Marcus. Thank you.